No, you might want to wait one moment because I'm not, you could now if you want, but I'm going to need a moment before we call, so I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Ring a ring. Do you, are you host?
Doesn't appear so yet. I don't know if I am, but I don't think I would be. In Town Hall, why is the internet so freaking slow? I hope our town employees don't have to deal with internet this slow. I mean, the meeting appears to be up, but I think Heidi's still hosting it.
But I need you to make sure that you let people in.
Yeah. Also, we have this feedback thing.
I think the computer mic's open.
No, he's muted.
I'm muted. In fact, it looks like everyone's muted except for the public access channel.
And you've asked for host.
Yep. Cool. Oh, okay, I've been given host tools. All right.
All right, you're host now?
Yep.
Great, and we all have that, so I think, and we're on air, I believe we're all set.
If you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
For those of you who would like to join, I'd like, you want to start the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. We, this is the Lunenburg Planning Board meeting for July 8th, Monday, 2024. We have a full house here, we have a good number of people in Zoom as well. This is your reminder that we are meeting at Town Hall tonight. If you're at home, you can either log, and you want to participate, you can drive on down to Town Hall, or you can log in to Zoom via the link on the agenda on the Town website. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live, so if you speak here, you're going to be aware. We do have Mr. Richard Harris with us, our interim land use director, who is with us remotely for his remaining time with the board. Thank you, Mr. Harris. And we have a very full agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to move us through. Just saying, I mentioned some people in the room earlier. The Economic Development Committee was scheduled for tonight. They cannot join us, so that is getting pushed out probably to the 22nd. That will be finalized. Great. The meeting's been called to order. Looking forward if there's any public comment before we get started. Seeing none in the room? Seeing no hands in Zoom?
Two folks just joined, but.
Okay, they can raise if they need, that's fine. And any board comment? None? All right. First up, we have Karen Chapman with us from Monticlet Regional Planning Commission to help us out with the MBTA communities zoning issues.
Issues is right. All right, I don't know how this is going to work on Zoom, so I need to... I should not mute here. I'm muted on Zoom.
Yep.
So they can hear me on here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And now I will put my camera on so I can share my screen.
And you can give Karen permission to share, right? Cool.
All right. Ooh, that looks terrible. All right. Yes, I am Karen Chapman. I'm the Planning and Development Director at the Monticlet Regional Planning Commission. I need to be able to screen share whoever's in charge of that.
Have you requested it? Or do I need to grant permission direct? Is there no option to like request ability to screen share on your end?
No, it just says host disabled participants screen sharing.
Great.
You have to invite her to be a host.
What was that, Richard? You're a little quiet in the room just because of the way the audio works.
I think if you invite her to be a host, then she can screen share.
Check now, I just went into host tools and checked the enable screen sharing.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
All right. Okay. Let's show, start from the beginning. All right. Is it going to show up on there?
Yep.
Okay. Does it show on that TV? I know it shows behind you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we can see it.
Okay. All right, all these pictures are in the way now. So I did not work on this project. One of our planners worked on this project, and he has left to work for the town of Westminster. So I am taking this over for him. We did this work under a planning assistance grant through the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. That grant ended on June 30th, so you'll need to get more technical assistance to continue, and I can talk about that when we're done.
Okay.
So yes, today I'm here to talk about multifamily zoning for MBTA communities, for the town of Lunenburg, review of requirements, potential multifamily overlay districts, and compliance models. So as you know, there's a housing crisis in Massachusetts and the country. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. My button's not working. Oh, it's down here. All right. Sorry. There we go. Technology, gotta love it. So Massachusetts has among the highest and fastest growing home, home... Sorry, I got to get rid of this. I can't see what I'm doing. All right. Start over. Massachusetts has among the highest and fastest growing home prices and rents of any state in the nation, and recently there was an article in the Washington Post or the Wall Street Journal, I can't remember which now, that central Massachusetts is especially struggling with this, this problem. Rising financial pressures on low and middle income families are a result of this, and that means that they can't purchase homes or find rent that's affordable, and so this is now the primary driver of homelessness in the state. I can't get this thing to... Okay. The high cost of living and a shortage of rental housing are driving people out of the state as well. And the lack of zoning for multifamily housing is a barrier for new housing development in Massachusetts. Most of the communities around here are all single family home on one to two acres, and that's a problem. So a little background on the MBTA communities. In January of 2021, legislators signed the Economic Development Bond Bill, amending Chapter 48, which is the zoning act, and Section A was added to require, number one, a zoning bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. You can't allow a special permit or anything like that, it has to be permitted as of right. Two, multifamily housing shall have no age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. So that just means one bedroom units probably wouldn't work for a family unless it's a tiny family. And then three, a district of reasonable size, which means you have to have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, subject to any further limitations imposed by the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act or Title V septic rules and regulations. So if you have, say you zone for 15 units per acre, a developer comes along and there's wetlands or whatever, or they need more room for septic and they can't do the 15 units per acre, that's fine. You don't have to take that into consideration. If water infrastructure or sewer infrastructure or septic systems need to be added to the town, that's the developer's responsibility. The town is not responsible to do any of that. And next, be located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable, not applicable in Lunenburg, so it can be anywhere in your town. So the timeline on MBTA communities. December 15th, 2021, draft guidelines were released for comment by the Department of Housing and Community Development, now the Environmental, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It took from January to December for them to give us guidelines, and they were a doozy. So in those guidelines, so Lunenburg would have been responsible for 750 units, as well as all the smaller communities. On March 31st, 2022, was the end of the comment period, and over 400 comments were received. MRPC wrote like a four or five page letter outlining all the concerns with rural communities, and several of our communities also wrote in letters, and because of that, on August 10th, 2022, final guidelines were issued, and some of the changes were, they revised the community category, so they removed bus and added adjacent small town, which is any rural community under 700 population, 7,000 population, or 500 people per square mile, which Lunenburg is. They made significant adjustments for small and rural towns with no transit stations, so Lunenburg was put from 750 down to 240 units, yes.
Is that 500 per square mile, is that the same as the rural classification?
Yes.
So for towns like Lunenburg, you may be getting to this, so I apologize. For towns like Lunenburg that are currently rural, but coming up at the next census, we're not going to be. We're going to cross that line.
It's what you are now.
Okay, cool, that's why I wanted to know.
You're not going to change it. Oh my God, Lunenburg, look, they have more people, we're going to make them... No, I don't think that's going to happen. They've had enough trouble with this one. I don't think they're going to move on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So now Lunenburg is responsible for 240 units. Changes to the reasonable size criteria, you can put a cap on the number of units per acre, so you can say 15 units per acre is our max, we don't want above that. Before, you couldn't say that. And then they tailored the district location requirements, which is not applicable to Lunenburg because you don't have a station within your borders. And then the state created a multifamily unit capacity tool called the compliance model, and we use that along with GIS to input parcels that we want to question whether they're going to be, they're going to satisfy the requirement of 15 units per acre, the area, the acreage you need. And so it's a really complicated tool, and every time I've tried to show it and explain it, everybody glazes over. It took us a long time to figure it out. But it is very helpful, otherwise we'd be doing a lot of math. So the timeline continued, December 31st. Oh, before this, we applied for a planning assistance grant, which ran from then, like October 22 until June of '24. So December 31st, an action plan was due for MBTA communities, and with our assistance, Lunenburg complied. Adam Burney submitted the action plan, and it was approved. So you're in compliance until your deadline of December 31st, 2025, you're in compliance. If you go past that deadline and you haven't complied yet, they will take action. The Attorney General will say, "You're not complying," and go down the path. So that's why Milton and the other, I forget the other one, they're the only ones that have passed their deadline and not done anything. Next, in August of '23, they revised the guidelines again to allow a mixed use requirement in village centers or commercial neighborhoods. So if, if communities like Lunenburg has a village center right here, if they wanted to preserve their commercial that's already here, they could require mixed commercial on the first floor and then have residential on the next two floors, but if you do that, only 25% of your unit capacity can come from that mixed use zone. And it must be approved by the Housing and Livable Communities Office, and it has to be submitted 90 days before you plan to have your town meeting vote, so that they can review it and say, "Yes, this is good to be voted on, go for it." And so these are the categories and the deadlines. Say you're in the adjacent small town, which is December 31st, 2025. Compliance. Section 3A is a zoning mandate, there's no opt-out mechanism. Failure to comply results in ineligibility for these grants, housing choice grants, green communities grants. I know Lunenburg's a green community, I assist with their grants, MassWorks, that's a huge one. Housing authority funds could be taken away. All of the grant programs in the One Stop for Growth, there's about a dozen in there, so it's really not advantageous to not comply. And according to the Attorney General, you'll be subject to other consequences, including risk liability under federal and state fair housing laws. So if you're not complying with this, the fair housing laws come into effect, and you could be really dinged with that. And you may be subject to civil enforcement action. Additional information, again, it's a zoning mandate, not a housing production mandate. You only have to zone, you don't have to build. It's intended to address the housing market conditions, not subsidize housing supply. So a lot of people wanted affordable housing to be part of this program, and it's really just to satisfy the market conditions where we have all kinds of missing housing for lower income folks, but they wouldn't budge with more than 10%. Affordable units allowed, as I said, but capped at 10%, unless you have a 40R, which you do, or an economic feasibility analysis is completed, which other communities have found difficult. District can be in an area that's already developed, which is preferred, you don't want to take a virgin parcel and just put it all there when you have some place that's already developed that could work. Multifamily housing must be allowed by right, but you can have a site plan review, which you are all familiar with. At least half of the multifamily zoning district land areas must comprise contiguous lots of land, so you can't have like a parcel here, a parcel there, a parcel there, there have to be parcels together. This is a picture sort of of what the missing middle housing is. Obviously, we're not going to have mid-rise all the way there on the right in Lunenburg. You'd be more in the duplex cottage court, fourplex townhouse, triplex, you have all of those in Lunenburg now. So that's just a shot of what it looks like. So the minimum land area in Lunenburg as an adjacent small town, there's no minimum land area required. However, you're required to do 240 units at 15 units an acre, comes out to about 16 acres. The minimum multifamily unit capacity for an adjacent small town, you're required to do 5% of your 2020 housing units, and Lunenburg's number of housing units in 2020 was 4,805. So you take 5% of that and you come up with the 240 units. So this is a map of the areas that we ran in the compliance model, it's hard to see this. So District 1 is over by the tri, is the tri-town area. District 2 is over by Lake Whalem. District 3 is Roger Way, right? And then District 4 is the parcel that's next to and behind Hanaford and Walmart. So when we ran the compliance model for your existing zoning, this is what we came up with. So this District 1 here is the tri-town smart growth overlay, there's nine acres, which isn't enough for Lunenburg, but you could build 203 units there, and I'm not sure if 203 have already been built. And then District 2, Lake Whalem, 41 acres, 270 units, and only 6.5 units per acre. Roger's Way is 37 acres, 1,358 unit capacity per district with 36 units per acre. And then 351 Mass Ave, 114 acres, 5,520 unit capacity with 48 units per acre. Now, in order to shrink those, we can only use a portion of a parcel, like that big parcel behind Hanaford, if we wanted to say it only goes to this line, that's possible too, to make it shrink.
Because we only have to get to 240.
So in the MBTA communities running those districts, you see how it comes up to 27 units per acre, 16 units per acre, 15 units per acre, and 15.4 units per acre, and that's using the calculations in that table I told you about. And they exclude any, any property that is state-owned, town-owned, its, its wetlands, its resource areas, its habitat areas, those are all excluded within the calculations. I know you're not understanding this because it's... So this shows the existing zoning for tri-town smart growth overlay, and this one on the right shows the MBTA communities. The only thing that we changed was the minimum lot size down to 20,000 from 40,000, and that gives you 240 units at 27 units per acre, and that's in the existing tri-town smart growth overlay. And then the Lake Whalem overlay district, same thing, we just changed it to 20,000 square foot lot size, and it gave us 20 units per acre with no cap. And then Roger's Way, same thing, we reduced it to 20,000 square feet, and we added a maximum lot coverage of 85%, and that gives us 15 units per acre. And then Mass Ave, same thing, 20,000 square foot lot, we reduced the building height from four to three, and that resulted in 15 units per acre. So the next steps, apply for more technical assistance funding, another planning assistance grant which just ran out, or you could wait till DLTA next year in January, which would go from January to December, or you could apply for mass housing partnership funding, which is usually a four to eight month timeframe, and the town would have to apply for that. The other two would be us applying. Decide on your potential districts. Out of the four, you could definitely say no to that one, or yes, maybe that one, just so we can narrow it down, or do some other areas in town. No one really participated in this process with us. We did email a few times, and once Adam left, it really was hard to get any feedback, so... So then if you choose a district, we'll develop a bylaw, which we've already sort of changed your use table to add a yes instead of a special permit. And then we would do map amendments as well. If you're undecided on any of those districts, we can run possible new districts based on your comments, other people's comments, wishes for people to be in the zone, and do you want to do public outreach before you choose or after you choose? It's different in all the communities, sometimes the people are like, "Whoa, we want to go through the whole process with you," and it's really, it's hard to talk with 50 to 75 people to determine where the best place is because people have varying opinions on it. So it's, I mean, this is public outreach, people can watch this and find out what it's about, they may not understand it, but there's plenty of information out there to read about it. And if you're choosing the 40R, like I said, you have to submit a preliminary compliance application 90 days before town meeting.
And we would have to have it passed by fall 2025 town meeting?
Correct.
And if the town, if we put it forward to town at fall 2025, and the voters say no...
We don't know yet what happens. It hasn't happened to someone yet to see who...
Potentially up the creek without a paddle.
Right.
Okay.
You just have to, not just, but you'd have to reevaluate, see what the concerns are of the people, like, why don't you want it there, or why do you want it here, or, you know, what's going through your thought process? And that's the last slide I have.
Okay. I turned to, I have more questions still, but I've been the only one asking so far. So I turn to the board and say...
And so the stuff I gave you was Ryan, who did this work before, he did a technical memo that explains what the whole process that he did and all of that, and with recommendations at the bottom, and then the pictures just give a short, little blurb about each district. So if you guys want to send me questions, I don't know if, if there's people during the day that can do a working group, or it's really up to you how you want to...
See, raise hand from Mr. Harris.
Ah, then yes, please, we're happy, happy to hear from Mr. Harris.
Karen, you mentioned 240 units unnecessary. It's my understanding that from the 40R reports that have been submitted by Adam to the state, that 203 units have been built in the tri-town 40R district?
Yes, that's correct.
So would that mean Lunenburg only needs 37 additional units?
You could phrase it that way. There's a lot of discussion about, "Well, we already have 40 units, so we only need 200," and it's not really counted that way. Yes, in the end, those do count, but you still have to zone for the 15 units per acre, which this does.
So we have, so they have 40R district zoned already, but it doesn't have the capacity of the 240 apparently?
Right.
So they would need to zone additional capacity at 15 units per acre, they would collectively bring it up to 240 units?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't know where they would, like, I haven't been out to the site, so I don't know if there's room to even do that. So thinking is they might say no. But we don't know until we try.
By definition, the 40R district is owned for 20 units or more per unit.
Yes.
For multifamily.
Yes.
So they would need to see if they can find another 40R area or add to that one, maybe.
Right. Or pick a totally different district. I mean, the one on Roger's Way, Roger Way, has a lot of room behind it. I mean, the one on Roger's Way, Roger Way, has a lot of room behind it. But it's up to you to, obviously, you're not making a decision. Guess you got to absorb it all and...
But it sounds like, to make sure I understand, I'm not advocating for this, I'm thinking out loud.
Yep.
This could be as simple as a small change for more dense within tri-town, for example. And that would meet our needs. And do I understand that from what you said correctly?
I do.
Okay.
If they approve it, that's the only thing.
If they being the state.
The state.
And they might not approve it because, this is where I struggle because there's so many, well, if the state says it's okay. And I'm struggling with, if it's a law, why it isn't concrete? And I'm sure I'm missing something here?
No, you're not.
Okay, I was worried about that.
So we were working, we are working with the town of Sterling, and they chose a spot where they had a 40B. And the state said no because it's already built, there's really no more room. It would be weird to put another level on the building or... So they said no to that, and so Sterling is back to the drawing board. So I hesitate with the answer because I really don't know what they're going to say. But the immediate thing is the additional technical assistance. If you want another planning assistance grant, those are due July 22nd. And we can do that for you.
How do we, I'm putting that into my notes right now.
All I would need from the town is a support letter, and I can get that from Heather.
Okay. Yeah, because Heather is leaving shortly. Yeah, okay, great.
And then the...
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, Richard, please.
Karen, do you have an application form that needs to be filled out for the district local technical assistance?
The DLTA won't be out until January.
Okay.
It's a, it's a calendar year program. But that's a possibility too. Or you could do MHP funding until the end of this year and then do DLTA next year. Or you could find someone else.
You mentioned, you had mentioned a request for assistance is due June, July 22nd?
Yes. And I'm worried that Lunenburg may not get it because we just finished one with Lunenburg.
And if we don't get the grant, then we got to work with you or someone and just pay out of pocket then, effectively.
You'll get one of these.
Oh, we'll get one of these?
I'm just, I'm not 100% on the PAG because you just had a PAG for the same day.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll say, why didn't you finish?
Well, the state, the state prefers not to fund a PAG for same community two years row.
Correct.
When they have limited funding.
Yeah. So I can, I can send the MHP information to you? Because the town would have to apply for that. It's a really easy application.
Okay. Any info? Great, thank you.
Okay.
Because without a full-time land use director, it's, and with the town manager changing, there's a lot of us pulling who aren't experts but conveniently play them on local television, so.
Karen. You had mentioned there were two towns that were out of compliance. Do you know how many towns have actually voted against it? They just not, have not hit the deadline yet?
I do not.
Last I knew, there was several communities, like 11 or so communities that actually had turned down at town meeting.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah. Tewksbury is one, Tewksbury is one of them. I watched there on YouTube, so if anyone's looking for more information, that was quite telling. They resoundedly voted it down. Because they had a lot of questions similar to what I have and concerns. And you kind of touched upon it, that they, I suppose, is the state, has getting a lot of feedback or kickback about this. Could you touch upon that a little bit?
There's varying degrees of unhappiness from, you know, outright no to hell no.
Yeah.
We won't do it over our dead body. But, you know, they, the state keeps it close.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I was wondering is more like, I think people should understand that with this adoption of the bylaw, how is the adoption of this bylaw different than other zoning bylaws?
So this, this would only need a majority vote, 51% or 50.2%.
As opposed to?
As opposed to a two-thirds vote for regular zoning amendments. So anything to do with housing now, you only need a majority vote.
So one, so part of my concern is just that. If this was a good idea, I think citizens would, you know, get around it. And if it's this board's position that we would be required to sell this to the citizens of Lunenburg, we'd have to, you know, explain that adding to, and it's, units is a comfortable word, but it's really families. So if we're going to add 240 families to this town, and in your presentation, you mentioned that it's going to be family-friendly. So it has to be a minimum of two bedrooms. And they, you can't, you know, they want it to be more. So what our position, you know, and if it is a good, you know, bylaw, I would be more than happy to support it. But I think instead of explaining to the citizens that this is a mandate from the state, and they send good people like you, fellow citizens, to come explain that to us, as opposed to explaining to us that it's a mandate and that if you, if you don't do it. So I don't even know why it's voted on if it's a mandate.
We would have liked the state to just do a bylaw for everybody and here you go, but no.
So I do, you know, the community outreach and information is imperative, particularly on situations like this. I mean, a lot of people have some skepticism towards, I will say, you know, state as well as federal government. And this just really feeds, feeds into that concern. Because I know a lot of these zoning districts, like, and this, this is probably from watching the many different meetings, but the Tewksbury one in particular, that one of the things they kind of convinced the public that this is nothing to worry about is you just simply need to zone it. Doesn't mandate that builders build it. So the one, and I apologize if I confuse it, but the Tewksbury one, they really, they were, they were just trying to, they chose a district that was already developed, and they still had, wanted nothing to do with it. Because I do think the state will, you know, whatever that, the long acronym is, that...
E O H L C?
That one. They have, how much, do you know what their budget is, how much money, funding they have? But I mean, they'll make, they, my concern is they could make it desirable for these zoning districts that the public just accepts because no one will ever develop there. But if the state comes in and puts sewer or whatever else, or just gives the developer a billion dollars, that's a concern.
You think the state's going to do that?
A billion? They'd throw billions like it, like it's nothing. And there's towns like Lunenburg, you know, watching all the local meetings, you know, we came out of a difficult budget season. You know, funding is very tight everywhere. But, but, you know, programs like this seem to have plenty of funding.
Right.
The state has plenty of funding to provide us, you know, good, good citizens like yourself to, you know, work our way through these, these type of issues.
What's been the major complaint that towns like Tewksbury have had? What has been there, here's why we don't want to do it?
It's really multifaceted. It's what, you know, a lot of it has to do with the bare bones, this, you shall do this, you have to vote this. So a lot of it has to do with that. And those are part of my concern. But like, like I said, if this was a good plan for Lunenburg, people would fall right in line. It would make, you know, be easy, easy to support. And I'm not saying that I don't support it or won't support it, but there's just a lot of open-ended questions that, that would need to be, need to be answered. And a lot of it is, as she touched upon, is, you know, infrastructure. And, you know, in Lunenburg, people are looking for an extra $10,000 and they're scraping everywhere for 10,000 or less. But you add, you know, I'll just use that number, 240 families. You know, what's that impact on traffic, schools, law enforcement, DPW? You know, all of that, all answers that need to be, questions that need to be answered. So I don't, and that's, that's what's holding this up a lot. They have those questions and no real answers.
Yeah, the state just keeps saying, you have to do it, you have to do it, you have to do it. I pushed back in the very beginning and they didn't like it. They got very angry.
And that, and that's, you know, that's troubling here.
I mean, legislators pass a law that's three sentences.
Right.
And then...
And it gets, it gets into as well, like these, you know, you hear a lot about the guidelines. I mean, a lot of times it's regulations that come through, you know, public hearings and they're, you know, but these are all guidelines, and as you've seen, they've already changed several times. And I would be, you know, and I'm far from an expert on it. I just hear these questions and I'm curious myself. But it's, it's, you know, I would be surprised. I know a lot of communities do send in their, their plans and are, and are kicked back from the state. Like I would, this was good news I heard tonight. Like if you could, if we could just redo the tri-town and add, you know, a few units, you know, that's, that's easy. But I suspect from, what I heard, and I'm not, you know, an expert on this, is that they would not approve that, that they want 240 new units. Family units, two, you know. Units is cute. It's, it's, you know, homes.
I didn't hear that. Is that correct? They're looking for 240 new rather than...
You have to zone for that many. Whether that many get built is a different question.
No, I guess, I guess, I guess to clarify that, because we got the 203 at tri-town. So if we expanded that area, excuse me, to allow the 240 total, that would give us the 36 new, 37 new. Would that be a likely plan to be approved or an unlikely plan to be approved?
I think it's 50/50.
So it's, it's closer to his point. I get you. Thank you.
And that's just one of the type of questions that, you know, we need answers to.
Absolutely. And I don't know who can answer that.
So for those here in the audience, for those at home, for those watching this later, just a little bit more background with this board's history on this topic. When this was first brought to us a couple of years ago, the state was saying, here's the expectation. It was larger in terms of units than it was now. I mean, fundamentally, I think many of us would consider not doable for Lunenburg. A town that doesn't control its own sewer, that doesn't control its own water, that is a rural community. And at the time, the state was saying, if you don't do this, we, here's two grants, at the time it was two grants, that you won't be able to get. And there were two grants that we don't typically get anyway. So as a board, we, and Mr. Allison, please correct me if you remember differently, we kind of looked at it and said, well, then maybe we're just not going to get those grants ever. That seems feasible, like, not great, but better than the alternative. And we were far from the only town to have this response. And that is when the state government started responding, saying, oh, but the AG is also going to stick its dogs on you, FYI. I mean, they probably phrased it more formally, but, okay. But basically, oh, sorry, we weren't also taking away carrots. Now that you're saying no, we have a really big ambiguous stick. So if you hear frustration from members of the board and from other communities, that would be why. Now, on the other hand, it's also worth noting that this has been divisive in the state in part because, especially the, it's different now with different regulations based on size of the town. But initially, when there was a lot of pushback from the more rural areas, that I was speaking with people from more urban parts of the state who were looking at it and saying, 15 units per acre is nothing. What are you talking about? That's, that's not dense. Well, it isn't maybe in Peabody. In Lunenburg, it's, it's very different. But that's what we're going to see. If you're looking at this at home, if you're talking to other people, you're going to hear some different opinions from officials across the state because we're, as is often the case, Boston writes, sometimes writes legislation that kind of views the world in a more urban way than we live here.
It may have been more acceptable if they had just used the ones that actually have a station in them. Because they say, so each community should put it where it's easy to get to transportation. Like, okay, where in Ashby are you getting transportation? At least you can ride your bike down a lemonster or whatever.
We have parts of town that are more adjacent to our, our more urban neighbors. The part of Ashby that's adjacent to Fitchburg is, well, that part of Fitchburg also isn't, isn't very urban.
Now, do we know if there's any vacancies at the tri-town or the other apartment complexes we have in Lunenburg?
I do not. You?
No.
Just, just to comment on that, excuse me, the zoning density is the thing there. And I don't think that, I think that whatever's developed already is allowing for that density. So regardless of they're occupied, I think it's still on the books as, as that. I don't know that...
That's one of their goals is to make more rental, rental units available. You know, and if Lunenburg is at, you know, peak, if there's no, no vacancy. But I also, I also wonder how that helps, you know, young families that are trying to save up to, you know, to buy a home, to spend $2,000 or $3,000 or more on rent. It seems to me to kind of trap them into not being able to save for a home.
Now, this doesn't require rental units though. These could be...
They could be either.
These could be purchasable homes in whatever format. I mean, again, maybe not, not a standalone single family like is very common in Lunenburg, but condos and other things. So there is some flexibility there. And as much as I don't like this, I will say it gets to the point of whether or not Lunenburg and many towns have enough affordable housing, right? Affordable housing, TM, it's a thing, it's a discreet thing. Whether or not we have enough affordable housing, we decidedly do not have enough housing that's affordable. And again, how are, my kids are eight and 11. How are they going to be able to stay in town if they choose to? When we couldn't afford our house now, when we bought it, we sure could. Now, I'm glad we, glad we got it when we did. And that, I know I'm not alone in that in this community. Other members of the board, do we have questions from Ms. Chapman or anything else?
I don't have anything at this point.
Okay. Karen, thank you very much. I believe we, oh, Richard, please.
Just one question. Karen, on the MHP grant, when would that be due?
What do you think?
Some grant?
That, when is the grant due?
Oh, it's a, it's a rolling one. The MHP is rolling.
Can the planning board be the applicant or does it have to be the select board or...
It has to be from the town. I don't, I think it would have to be Heather.
Okay, select board then, okay.
She would have to sign it as the authorized representative.
Would it need select board authorization too or...
I don't know how you operate in this town.
Okay.
I mean, I think she's had the authority to sign grants for me before.
Yeah, I believe she, I believe the town manager does.
Yes.
I hope the interim town manager also has that ability, depending how timing works out. But if there's a due date for some of these of July 22nd, that could also be moved. All right? Please.
I do remember when you came to us the first time, it was very saddening news and you, you were, you were very soft at giving it to us. And we could, it was very apparent that you yourself did not personally agree with it. And I appreciate your candor. I had asked at that last meeting, I believe, to get the half, was it half mile from a, from an MBTA? Excuse me.
Station.
Our town had to be within a half mile of an MBTA to be considered an adjacent?
No.
Our zoning has to be... Our zoning has to be within a half mile of an adjacent.
Our zoning has to be within a half mile of an adjacent.
No.
Okay.
It can be anywhere in your town because you don't have a station.
Anywhere in our town.
Doesn't have to be a half a mile from the Fitchburg station or the Lemonster station or anything.
Okay. I misunderstood. It's interesting that they're all in.
Wouldn't be possible.
Currently developed. I thought there was a minimum, there was a requirement to be within a certain distance of an existing station, no?
There was.
There was.
Under the rules at the beginning, but when they changed the numbers, they took that out for all adjacent small towns.
So that's gone. Okay. So when you got the list of four things in 22 from the land use director, that was still in effect? Yeah. So we really shouldn't pay much attention to this because it was confined to that requirement at that time, in, in my opinion. Would you, would you concur?
No, I don't think so because they're all over the place.
Well, I mean, yeah, but they're all, they're all.
We tried to pick places that already had like multifamily that maybe could possibly fit some more in it rather than a wrought parcel that you're just going to have too many units on.
Okay. So these recommendations were not provided by our previous land use director. These recommendations come from?
Us.
Yeah, okay. From MRPC.
Yeah.
Great.
And we would not be offended at all if you said no to all four. It's your town and it's your decision. We don't want to make that decision for you.
We give you money, you give us options, we can say thanks, but no thanks. Cool. Um, great. I, I might have a quick question or two for Mr. Harris myself, just to understand some next steps on our end. But I, if there's no more questions for Ms. Chapman, I do want to let her go about her life.
Well, I would like to follow up. One more, one more comment was that the Green Communities Grants is currently one of the things that'll be disallowed if we don't comply?
Yes.
And that was not one of the original two?
No, it was not.
So, so.
And there's, in fact, there's a spot on the application that says, are you an MBTA community and are you compliant?
On the Green Communities?
The application. That's where they're putting it now on all the applications.
So they init, they introduced this, I just want, I just want to run through this again. They introduced this, they gave us some stipulations. They said, well, if you don't do it, then we're going to do this. They got a lot of pushback. They got a lot of towns saying, we don't want to do it and we don't mind not getting those things. So they just increased?
Right.
Okay.
They doubled down.
Very good. I just wanted to reaffirm that. Thank you.
I wish I could double down like that at the blackjack table, like escalate, increase my bet 500-fold. That sounds amazing. All right. Thank you so much.
Send it out.
Okay, thank you. Um, Richard, I have a couple, if I may, just for board management purposes, kind of technical questions now. Because before, when we had a full-time land use director, there would just be a lot of very soft atoms saying, hey, what do you think we should do? And we would say, well, maybe this. And he'd say, okay, uh, I can work out, like, great, that would be this grant and I'll just go take care of it. Uh, I guess my question would be, um, for things like these grants, how does that decision get made now? Because, like, that was all very streamlined before, but we don't have that, you're that role, but you're not really that role. So what happens now?
Well, I want to see the application form that Karen said she'd send, the MHP application form, and see how complicated that is. If it's simple and straightforward, I would still draft it up and then have Brian submit it to Heather for signature.
Okay.
And I would, I would recommend the next step would be to pursue the MHP assistance as a step, a further step in this process.
And that's where I'm going to turn to the board and just look for some quick consensus. Uh, Mr. Harris is recommending that we basically do the next step because even if we decide as a town to eventually be one of the communities that thumbs our nose at the state, um, that may or may not be what we decide, that may or may not be wise. I don't, I don't, I certainly don't know yet. But whether or not we choose to do that, it sounds like we're going to need to get further in the process and this is the next step to get further in the process. So, um, I, I don't think we need a, I mean, I don't think this needs to be a motion vote, though it can if it needs to be. Just want to touch base and say, are we good kind of going forward in that direction?
What is MHP?
Yeah.
MHP, mass housing, something?
Ri, Richard?
Mass Housing Partnership.
And, and how far, how closely connected to this, this long acronym, E O I?
They really aren't. They're, they're, they're close, but they're not.
They're like two fingers away from the same hand that's slapping us?
Similar.
Okay. Yeah, they're going to fund us to comply with their crap.
Uh, but my, my suggestion for the MHP is that's the only readily available, uh, source of funding for technical assistance you have because very frankly, you're not getting another planning assistance grant this quickly. Uh, and the PAG is even closer to E O H L C than MHP is. I love outfit soup. Um, so I think pursuing them, and if, if anybody questions it, it shows that you're trying to follow through the process and make your full due diligence before you present something to town meeting for approval or rejection.
Just curious how much these technical assistance grants are, the monetary amount?
They vary. You know, from $10,000 to $50,000 or more.
All right. So are we comfortable kind of heading in that direction as we suss this out and figure out what needs to happen?
Yeah.
I'm getting general consensus and again, this isn't a formal act. So Richard, we don't need a vote on this, do we? Or is it better if we have a vote on it?
I think it'd be good to be on the record that the planning board supports pursuing a mass help, pursuing funding for technical assistance to further evaluate, uh, the MBTA zoning compliance requirement.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Great. Thank you for that. We can check, I'm going to go back in my notes and check that off. Hooray. Um, again, very full agenda tonight and going to keep us moving. There is no economic development committee once more tonight. They are hoping to move to July 22nd. Um, and we'll see if that comes through or not, watch our future agendas, if that's an item of interest to you. We do have public hearings scheduled tonight. The first is the stormwater management permit for 255 Sunny Hill Road. And this is ongoing from, it's not, not on the agenda, but this is ongoing, so.
Yep. So, excuse me, Brian Marchetti here from McCarty Engineering. Spoke with Richard today through email. We're going to, we're going to request a continuance, but he wanted me to come in to give you an update. So we were asked by the conservation commission back in April to have a third-party review of the wetland line. Uh, that review was conducted back in May, beginning of June, and we have done a field visit with the conservation agent. Uh, that was conducted last week. Uh, we were going to present the findings at the July 3rd hearing, um, but being the night before the 4th of July holiday, uh, they didn't have a quorum. So we don't have the information to present to you tonight yet. The commission did reschedule the meeting for this Wednesday night. So we're going to be before the commission on Wednesday, so we should be able to have, hopefully, an answer for you by the next, uh, planning board meeting in July.
For July 22nd, I believe.
We're going to, we're hoping to, you know, press the commission to vote on it this week to give us an answer.
And, uh, Richard, any vote on this the board has to take is just a simple majority, correct?
Correct. This is just a stormwater permit.
Yeah, okay, great. That's why I wanted to make sure. Uh, I think we might be down some, I expect we're going to be down at least one member on the 22nd, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't moving you out to a time that could.
Either way, we need to finish with conservation. So we should be at that point and, you know, worst case, we had to continue planning it again. We should have a resolution.
Thank you so much. Um, and I would like to look to, I would look for a motion ideally to continue the public hearing for the stormwater management permit for 255 Sunny Hill Road to, uh, July 22nd at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Oh, whoa, discussion, please. Sorry.
Point, point of order, uh, probably question to Richard, does it matter that, um, our new member hasn't been on previous, uh, meetings of this permit?
I think the fact that he was not on the board when, when it started is issue. I would, my, I tend to be conservative on this and my position be that he shouldn't be participating because he was not on the board when it was started. If he had missed a meeting and he was already on the board, then you, um, you could consider that as a way of participating by viewing the record, but he wasn't on the board. That's, that'd be my concern.
Okay. So the, just to, just to clarify, the simple majority would need to be, would need to be the three of us?
Yes. And so I would ask the board as well, um, as I've shared with you, I will not be present for the July 22nd meeting. So if you know of a conflict that will prevent your, um, attendance, could you please email, um, myself, Richard, and the vice chair? Because, uh, Mr. Willsner, because I may be gone then and I want to make sure that this gets, that way we can also talk with the applicant. If, if the board can't hit quorum in a way, well, if the board has quorum, but not the correct quorum to meet their needs, we're not wasting their time.
And email Logan as well.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Sorry, Logan.
Oh, good.
Um, okay. All right. So, uh, again, I would look, if we have a motion to?
Moved and seconded. That was.
Oh, but I don't know, since we kind of got off topic if we needed to, if we can go back to it, that's cool. Great. We do have a motion that's moved and seconded. We've had some discussion. Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
And all, all opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Putting that in my notes. All right. Now we're on to the special permit for signage at 3 Lancaster.
Um, so the representative for that is in the Zoom meeting, um, but they did message me earlier, um, saying that they wouldn't be sitting through the rest of the meeting because their application is, is incomplete. There was some miscommunication, I believe, between, uh, Richard and some other staff about when you could and could not accept an application. And as a result, their application was submitted and the, um, notices put out and all that process that landed it here well before any of the prerequisites for that, like the documentation we needed were actually present. So, uh, if, if the representative were here and, oh, he is here. Um, okay, he stayed through. Great. Um, Sanford, if you want to unmute, um, you will be speaking directly with the room.
Um, I'm actually going to pause this before we have, uh, him speak for a moment. We don't have any documentation in the?
In the share file?
In the share file. So do documents exist? Can we open the public hearing?
Um, documents exist and I can get them in there and we can open the public hearing, but my understanding is that there would be no other result other than?
Okay, so we.
Continued?
Maybe don't open then if need be. Okay, great. But we can listen to, um, Sanford, I didn't catch the first name and find out what's up.
I'm sorry. Point of order, if we don't open it, then we can't take input, I believe. Richard?
So, Mr. Harris, the question was, can we still hear from the applicant if we don't fully open the public hearing?
No, you need to open the public hearing if you're going to take, uh, input from the applicant. The public has right to participate in that.
I did not hear it. I apologize, sir.
If, you can't take input from the applicant if you don't open the public hearing.
Okay, so we do need to.
And if it's, if it's an incomplete application, then I would suggest that what applicant needs to do is, uh, give the board time, no, uh, and extension the deadline to begin the public hearing because you have a statutory deadline, I think of 65 days to begin the public hearing. And then when you find out what, I, this first, I've been told about that there's deficiencies in, in this middle.
Okay. Uh, can anybody here be there?
Uh, I can hear you. Yeah.
Okay. And I have been put through the wringer by your town and your processes and your lack thereof. Okay? I understand there's been a lot of things going on in the town and people have been changing places and whatnot, and I understand that. I went through the process, I filed the, the application and I told them that I would be bringing back the information that was required for the application. The next thing I know, I'm on your meeting list. I haven't even paid you $200 for the application fee. I haven't submitted the abutters list with, with the, with the, with the envelopes and all of a sudden, I'm on the meeting tonight. I'm not supposed to be here. I was never supposed to be brought in here. Okay? So all I want to do is just continue this. I am working through the process to file the application the right way and I would just like to get back on the agenda in four weeks because it's going to take me more than two weeks to get the, uh, envelopes done. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, but without, yeah, Richard, please.
I suggest you just cancel the public hearing because it wasn't properly, uh, not, you can't, you would have to say it's not properly noticed because the abutters haven't notified, et cetera. And, um, then we'll re, have to re-advertize for the next, uh, the next meeting where we have sufficient time to do so.
Um, Mr. Harris, my, my understanding is that it was, um, advertised and, and those advertising requirements, the abutters were notified by, um, Annie Aubrey. But the, everything that was meant to come before that, the documentation wasn't in.
Well, I just heard the applicant say he was saying, I noticed the abutters.
Right.
Okay. So do we need a vote to cancel or can we just not do anything?
What, what the applicant said is that I was not told the process for notifying the abutters. I was told to, I had to pay a $20 fee to get the abutters list and then that was it. They didn't tell me that I had to bring them two envelopes for every person on that list and all this other stuff. So now that I found that out this morning after meeting with Logan and Brian, I now understand what the process is. So that's what I'm doing. I'm, I am getting the envelopes put together and I'm going to bring those back with a check with the other pieces of the application process so we can do this properly. So if you want to just postpone or cancel, I mean, I know you notified a bunch of people. I don't get to put a retraction in, whatever, but I, you know, my application was not finalized. I, I shouldn't even be here tonight, so I, I don't know what, how to deal with this.
We absolutely, we, we hear that there was a miscommunication in the process. Um, you have our sincere apologies. It is, we're all, uh, for anything that happened on our end and I hear you that you're not looking to do anything tonight. So, great. My question, I appreciate that. So, Richard, please.
My motion, my suggestion would be there'd be a motion, cancel the hearing based upon the applicant's indication that there's additional material he's submitting, uh, that there's some miscommunication between town officials and the applicant as to what the requirements were and therefore it appears that everybody was not properly notified and therefore the hearing should be canceled and to be advertised at a new date and time when everything, all the materials are received.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Har, if someone wishes, Mr. Harris has put forward, uh, an acceptable motion.
Might I, might I recommend that the applicant with, uh, make, make a request to withdraw without prejudice and reapply?
That would be his option.
I, I don't, is there a form for that too? I'm fine. What I've got to do is just wait.
Mr. Sanford, do that. All you need to do is submit an email to Logan and myself indicating, send your, due to miscommunication and other issues, you're withdrawing and you'll re-submit a complete package at a time in the future.
Okay, so I will send you, Logan, an email and copy you, Richard?
Yes, or send to me, copy to Logan, whichever, just so both of us on the email.
Okay. I will do that.
And in the meantime, since we're waiting for him to do that, I suggest just to have on the record, the board cancel the hearing.
Okay. So I would, looking to have that on the record. We could have a motion to cancel the hearing for the reasons previously specified by Mr. Harris.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Mr. Ellison, was that an aye and I missed it?
No, I don't really want to have any part in this.
Oh, okay. I'm fine with that. No, cool. Then abstains.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Not an issue. Okay. All right. Certificate of completion for 321 Sunny Hill Road, we can move to later because there's no one here who needs to do anything for that. Oh, are we, do, okay, is there?
If you'd like to complete it, then.
Okay, yeah, I would say, is there a vote for that or?
Yes.
Oh, never mind. I was seeking while we signed things, it could do it later. Okay, great. Then let's move on to the certificate of completion for 321 Sunny Hill Road. My bad.
Tim Battle, CTV Holdings, 321 and 317 Sunny Hill. I'm looking to have the completion of the certificate for 321 only. GEI was out there, I believe, 10 days ago. Mr. Harris could probably confirm the exact date. The report came back that 321 has met the specifications of what is needed. 317 will remain open until obviously any construction is completed there.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I am looking over, we have the report from Graves dated June 26th. And you're saying that says that everything is all set for 321? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's how I read the report.
What was that, Richard? Sorry.
That's how I read the report.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board regarding the certificate completion for 321? Okay, I'm taking a moment to double review everything. So I am. The letter from Graves is dated 320, or June 26th. I see several comments on it regarding 321 for June 4th. There's nothing later than that in this letter. Is that correct, Richard?
June 26th was, was the report. They, June 4th, they made comments and then they had additional comments after that based upon their.
Got it.
One visit.
The bold section.
Yes.
The more recent.
Bold section, bold section is from the late, the most recent review.
Okay, I understand this now. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I'll go back to, I'll always go to the bottom line. The overall summary, they state, as stated above, the stormwater BMPs are in a, are in a satisfactory condition and functional, but additional mature grass cover has yet to germinate. GEI has no technical issues with the current state of the stormwater BMPs.
Okay.
And I would note that Mr. Battle did put up a formance guarantee, I think it was 12,500, that covers 317 and 321. And that doesn't go away if you issue the certificate of completion.
Got it.
In case the additional grass doesn't come up.
Unless you'd like it to.
All right, so we are, so we've had explanation with Mr. Harris. We've had a chance to look this over. Do we, again, thoughts from the board, questions from the board?
Our, you know, recommending engineer has signed off on it and said, for everything I read, they've said that it is now in an acceptable condition.
Yep, that's, I mean, I personally agree with that. That's my thought.
I agree with that.
Okay. All right, I would look for a motion for, what would the motion be if we were, like, to endorse the certificate of completion to?
To grant a certificate of completion for stormwater permit regarding 321 Sunny Hill Road only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. So we will grant the certificate of completion.
Until the next time.
Yeah, rock and roll. Okay. I'm going to move minutes approval to later in the meeting because we have guests here who are extremely patient with the super exciting life of planning board. And that would move us on to board discussions with the Board of Water Commissioners regarding, in between us as well, for the Water Supply Protection District.
I'm Fran McGrath, the superintendent of the water district. Also with me is two of my board members, Mark Bersh and Jim and Matthew Woodward. I always call him Woody, so.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
You guys don't have to follow over meeting law, do you?
We do.
You do?
Yeah, we call, we just call the meeting to order.
Okay, perfect.
So we're actually in official meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you guys have a process or you just wanted to talk about?
No, this, no, I mean, you have a meeting, we have a meeting, we're all meeting. So now we can talk. I will welcome, as we're talking back and forth, I'm also going to welcome many members of the public to speak because I think they're here for this as well. And hopefully, we can get good thoughts together in a collabor, in, in a collaborative fashion. That's my hope.
Because I thought there was a meeting just between us, not, not the public. We have public comment at later, but.
I typically do invite public in for input. But if, I also want to respect the way your board runs. If you would rather have your piece, I'm going to invite members of the public later then, but.
No, I, I want to, yeah, I want to get this over.
I would love to get this over with.
Yep, so I mean, whatever you guys want to do, it's fine with me. I mean, these guys are in charge. I work for them, so. But, so I, I, I went through this whole thing. I mean, the original one that Adam Bernie went through and there was a lot of discussion back and forth. We were in 100%, 100% agreement. And went through our hydrogeologists, went through Mass DEP, only a couple little words were tweaked. And everything was a, was a good to go. And that was just for specifically the zone two. Adam came back and said that the planning board wanted to also do the zone three, perfectly fine with me. And then stuff started coming about the zone ones, which I don't have a problem putting wording in for the zone ones. DEP actually recommended wording for the zone one. And to me, as long as we, we put that in there, the big, biggest concern, which has to be removed, is that no treatment plants can be constructed in the zone one. That, that's not possible. It has to go there. So that's the only thing that has to be removed. Then the wording, there was a lot of things that was put in there, mostly tied to the zone one where it was the whole guideline, the whole protection district was based on zone two, zone three. And then to put zone one in there was just added to it. So it really wasn't the right way to do it. So I think what the, you need to just modify this slightly and do a zone one specific permitted uses and put that in there. You can do the walking, bicycle paths, passive recreation, bicycling. This is all from the Mass DEP one. Then they have specific wording on the, you know, ability to construct, installation, operating, maintenance, inspection, repair, replacement, protection of the well and associate infrastructure necessary in incidental to the use of the well as a public water supply. That, that has to be in there. And then it was all just a lot of little things that was in the, the one that you guys had that I'm not opposed to. A lot of things that if they're not going to impact the water supply, I'm not opposed to it. So.
So there's a draft that's currently before the board that we've looked at that's been passed around a lot. Could you, I know you've mentioned them just now. But could you help walk us through specifically within the draft, your concerns? So we can kind of look at them on our copies and make some notes and that way I can make sure we're all talking about the same things. Because I believe there's other members of the community who are here, who are shaking their heads. They have things they're going to want to say too. So for now, I want to stick between the two boards just to get the ball rolling some. Mr. Harris?
I just want to clarify that we're talking about the most recent draft that I submitted. There's a memo in your shared file, June 30th, with a revised draft attached. And I revised the draft based upon comment from the water district regarding an error I'd made earlier. And brought back zone one permitted uses to essentially what's in the existing bylaw. And then I took out the provision in zone one completely. So there are no prohibited uses in zone one, except that the way it's written, if it's not allowed in the underlying zone, well, only the uses specified in zone one are allowed. And if the water district and the board want to add water treatment plant in there, that's, that's up to the board. You look at the model bylaw that Mass DEP, Mass DEP provides, it doesn't address zone one or zone three. It basically addresses zone two. So the information on zone one, zone three is a local determination as far as the model bylaws they provide.
So this, we're looking at, I believe, the file that includes the phrase 2024-06-29 correction to zone one. Is that the correct file, Richard?
Or? It should be 2024-6-30 memo regarding.
I have the print copy of this here if you need.
Okay.
But it should be in the share file for this meeting.
I don't think I saw.
Board discussions.
File. Well, let me see. I might be totally off base on that one.
Yeah, it's under Board Discussions, folder seven.
Okay, cool. Then I missed it.
I have a question for Logan.
Yeah.
Do you have the 24 pages printed?
Yes.
Okay, if nobody wants them, I'd like to have them at the end of the meeting. I don't need.
Oh, at the end of the meeting?
I, I have the digital now, but I, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm just grabbing, I know the one you mean. I thought I had that one, but no, I grabbed a different one.
And just to explain basically what I did. When it was brought out that the revised proposed draft allowed residential in zone one, I knew that was a mistake and then I went back and looked at it. When the res, the original draft that the board considered back in November did not include zone one. Residents asked that the permitted uses in the current zoning bylaw be allowed in zone one. I incorrectly amended the existing one to just add zone one in there instead of going back to the existing zoning bylaw. So what you have under zone one permitted uses is essentially what the current bylaw says.
Okay.
For zone.
So as of right now, the permitted uses in the current draft are the same as the current bylaw?
Except for one's minor addition. Hunting is included in here.
And is included now and was not before?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And you're saying that you have a concern with the zone one?
Only adding that treatment is allowed, which there is, there is a model zone one DEP permitted acts and uses in the zone one. There is permitted language that Mass DEP has. Typically, they don't use zone ones as protection because we own and control the zone one. The only part that's going to be a concern is we own the land area around the Hickory Hills well. We don't control the 400 radius that goes in the lake. We're not required to. So we only control the land area. So that's what seems to be a concern. So if you put in boating and fishing, whatever you want, that's fine with me. We have no control over what happens on the lake anyway.
Because as far as DEP is concerned, zone one doesn't exist, zone one does not exist upon water. It only exists upon.
Land area. That is correct. So on, on the permitted uses from the, in the draft one that you have, the only section that needs to be removed is E and F. That's on page five, F permitted uses. So the E and F.
Farming, gardening, nursery.
Farming, gardening, nursery, concrete, forestry, harvesting, grazing, fertilized herb, like, none of that, none of that can be even listed in the, the zone one. So I would leave it just, if you remove that, then you have all your, your walking, bicycling, whatever, whatever you need to do.
Okay, I'm just, I'm reading that section right now myself.
But the issue with that is under Master in Law, chapter 48, section three, agriculture uses are exempt from zoning regulations. And a town cannot use zoning to prohibit if they meet the, the agriculture exemption.
Well, you're, you're looking past that we own and control all that, so there is, we're not going to allow that. And no matter what you put in this bylaw or protection district, if we don't want it, it's not going to happen. You know, if, if you want to put in something and you say it's okay and we say it's not, it's a not. It's not happening. So the agricultural thing, I mean, same, same thing, you could put it in there. It doesn't matter because we're not going to allow it anyway. So I guess that's, that's, whatever you want to do, it's fine with me.
And makes clear as provided under Master in Law 48. So therefore, if it's not, if it doesn't reach the exempt level of 48, section three, then it's not allowed. It, it just is trying to make this compliant with the agriculture exemption that the state provides. And again, if the property owner doesn't want to use on property, it's not going to happen anyway.
I agree.
If I may?
Please.
The, the, the landowners association documents already disallow keeping of livestock and, and body animals. So it's really a moot point.
Well, at Hickory Hills, but that's not the only zone one.
There's many zone ones.
That's true. That's true. That's true.
And it, and it sounds, and so I think what I'm hearing from you is, so I'm going to use a lot of phrases like you feel. And I'm, that is not me saying you're wrong. That is me acknowledging I am not a lawyer. So I'm going to say, like, so you feel that even if that's in there, you can say, don't do it anyway. And again, I'm not, I'm not doubting your authority. I haven't, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a guy who got elected to a position like all of us are. So a guy or gal or anything else. But you're saying you're comfortable with E because if there's a use that. But you're saying you're comfortable with E because if there's a use that really needs to be banned, you can say no to it regardless?
I mean, that is true. I would prefer to see it removed. I would prefer to see we do the Mass DEP. You know, I, I mean, that's kind, I went through this thing, there's a lot of things that are in there, like, well, this really shouldn't be there, but it's there and it doesn't really matter. So to me, I would, to make it clean, I would actually remove it, but if it's there, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight over it.
I think the point here is to...
Yeah, please.
I think the point here is to, I guess, make sure that all these bylaws that we end up voting on are clean and they jive. So in other words, we wouldn't want a bylaw to be put in place that's in a direct violation of a Mass DEP bylaw. And I think it's kind of why we're here today, is to make sure as we go through this process that we're checking all the boxes along the way. So there's not some random Lunenburg bylaw that doesn't hold water, pun intended, against Mass DEP. You understand what I'm saying?
So, I believe I do. But do, and other members of the Board chime in at any point? Don't wait for me to acknowledge it's a discussion we should, we can discuss freely.
I totally agree with the sentiments that have been expressed. And going back to our last meeting, town meeting, was that the town bylaws were revised, removing some, something that was not effective because it was overridden by the state. It was the farm size in our bylaws. So as the Town Council explained to us and at town meeting, it was an existing, non-enforceable thing in our bylaw which shouldn't have been there. And I can, I appreciate not wanting to continue to insert things that should not be there or that aren't enforceable.
Yep. Mr. Harris.
Just make it simple. If their concern is having the item E in Zone One, take it out as long as you don't say you're prohibiting it, the Attorney General is not going to object to the bylaw.
Perfect. Good.
And that, I can, that's where I was going with it, as I was trying to piece these thoughts together, was hearing from what Mr. Harris said and knowing that the AG does review the bylaws and we have gotten feedback before. They haven't kicked back any ones we've passed recently, but they've said, "Ooh, this could be interpreted in a way." And so I've seen how the AG can be very picky about wanting their exemptions preserved.
If you stated you prohibited farm uses, I think you probably have rejected by the AG. But if you don't mention farm uses, I think you're fine.
I'm going to turn to the Board and ask, "How do we feel about that?" Just getting rid of that Section E, we're not saying it's banned, that should meet the AG's needs, that could meet the Water District's needs, and it makes it a little more simple in that there's not, less ambiguity. Would we be comfy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it sounds like y'all are comfy with that.
Yes.
So I'm now going to turn to other members of the public, and I'm going to say, within this narrow realm, I know there's going to be other topics, but I want to kind of keep it to one topic at a time. Within this narrow realm of, in Zone One, talking about farming, gardening, the Section E, I can read out a lot of need, B. Are there any public comment about that section? About removing that? Ms. Pease, please, I would like you to come up and use the microphone. And I think it might be helpful to get some microphones from the back.
Joan Pease, 11 Wintergreen Court, I just want to make it clear, we have no objection to removing E.
Okay.
No one has any objection to removing E.
Great, thank you. Wonderful. I'll take the wins where we can get them. So, sounds like everyone's comfy, removing E. Wonderful. So let's talk about some of your other concerns with the current draft. And we, again, I like this going one at a time to really...
I agree.
Narrow.
F, I had on my notes to remove. It was regarding paving, 50% of the lot with impervious surfaces. I mean, like, same thing with the other one, it can be there, it doesn't matter, but we don't pave around our well sites. But if it stays, it's not a problem because we don't do it anyway, so...
Yeah.
It's another one of those things. I mean, we can just pass on that one if you want. Then Mr. Harris made a, you know, crossed out Zone One and Item 103, that was perfect.
Okay.
Then the next section, next page, Section H, but shall not include construction of a new treatment works and related. That can't be there.
In Section H...
Oh, no, that's referring to Zone Two and Zone Three. Well, that shouldn't be there in Zone Two either, but the whole intent is to build in Zone One anyway, so we're not, the intent, we're not going to build in Zone Two either, so... But that really should not be in there.
Okay, I'm struggling a little bit. I get that you object, but I'm not quite sure which section. So can we be, I'm looking at Section H.
I think it's Section G, if I'm not mistaken.
Page six.
Section F.
Yeah, we're still on F.
Still on F.
Oh, still on F. Bang-a-rang, okay.
Oh, subsection, okay.
Oh, I get it. You can't get nothing by me on the eight or ninth try.
Item H in Zone Two, Three.
Yep. So, F3, the following units are permitted...
Go on that and go to subsection H.
Subsection, okay, I...
Construction, maintenance, repair, and enlargement of existing drinking water supply-related facilities such as, but not limited to, wells, pipelines, aqueducts, and tunnels, but shall not include construction of new treatment works and related.
And your concern is, and, Richard, was that a hand?
Yes.
Okay, so I do want to hear from the Water District a little more here. Your concern is all of subsection H?
Correct. So we're not, we're not looking at one well site here. We're looking at all the well sites in the town of Lunenburg. So, for example, the Lancaster well, there's a very large Zone Two and a Zone Three area. So if we need, if we have to build a treatment plant outside of Zone Two, we're running miles of water main. We're buying land somewhere. I mean, it's, and we're already talking treatment plants that are, you know, massive amounts of money, 12, 15 million dollars. Well, you do this, you're adding millions to that already enormous number. To me, this is out of line. DEP's already, already has this, we already discussed it with them, this is out of line to them too. So this, this needs to be addressed. And this is, this is a hard no on us, that is not going to be in there.
Richard?
Yes. That is in there as a result of comments from the residents. They wanted to limit it to existing, and then they want to prohibit new treatment works to address the Water District's comments. You would want to take out the word "existing" as well as "but shall not include construction of new treatment works and related." This was some that, again, the residents, some residents indicated they were strongly opposed to new treatment works. And it's a policy decision of the Board as to what do you want to recommend, what town we need to action.
It's permitted.
All right. And this would apply to, I'm trying to scroll through a little. So this would, this would apply for water treatment works in Zone Two and Three? That's what I'm trying, I guess I'm trying, I want to make sure we're all talking the same thing. This would, as written, would prevent new treatment facilities within Zone Two and Three?
That's what it says.
Richard, that's...
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we crossed out the one already. Well, Mr. Harris did.
Okay.
And the only reason I didn't cross this out was because this was put in there specifically as a response to residents' comments at the planning board's public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If you go back to our last master plan that we had, we heard the residents well. We came up with a plan to not have treatment in the area where they didn't want it. Unfortunately, that was, that was shot down. But in order to do any treatment, most treatment happens in the Zone One. If you go to other communities, most of the treatment plants are very close to their water sources and in the Zone One. So that's why we have a concern moving forward. We've heard their concerns. Our goal is to always present something to the public that would mitigate an installation in that, in that area. But it may, you know, we might come to that point where we have to, and we don't want to eliminate that.
Okay. And again, we're talking about, as written, this would disallow treatment, treatment plants in Zones One, Two, and Three?
Which would be very costly to the district.
Due to needing to pipe all the way outside of any of the...
Yeah, so I...
Well, yeah, I mean, we already discussed the Zone One, where I said we got to put it back in there. Now, now we're mostly talking about the Zone Two and Three, but yes, if, if we did a, let's say we did a, if we did a combination multi-well facility, let's say we built a, not near the wells, and we bought some land and did it in the middle location between the two, this would prohibit us from doing that as well. So we'd have to go some, who knows where to get that to happen.
All right. And this is where I'm going to turn to the Plating Board next and say, I'm going to recognize that I could not be here for that part of the discussion, for that discussion. So I bet there's members of the public who are going to want to speak to this as well, and we will get there. Could I get the members of the Board who were there, some of your interpretation of what got us to no treatment plants, period, in any area controlled by this bylaw? Or what the feeling or sentiment was that was there? If you're not sure, that's fine.
Call.
Was that a meeting?
What?
It was at a Planning Board meeting?
It, it sounds like it. Richard, please.
Yeah. First of all, it doesn't prohibit treatment works in Zone Two anywhere. Later in the bylaw allows treatment works by special permit in Zone Two. But yes, it was at the public hearing on the bylaw amendment where the planning board, following the public hearing, voted not to put the article forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we're talking about, so Mr. Harris is saying this wording does allow the construction of a treatment plant by, in Zone Two, by special permit. I'm assuming there's other language and other sections that handle that.
Yeah, yeah. This language doesn't, but later in the bylaw it does.
What's that? Sorry?
In that section, it doesn't allow it, but it does allow in Section H, it allows a special permit for treatment works and new treatment works in latest structures.
Okay. So, as written now, it is not a by right use, but...
Correct.
It would, it would be allowed with a special permit. Again, just to make sure we're all on the same page, uses by right often are subject to site plan approval, which is effectively a checklist.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Do you, do you meet X, Y, and Z? If so, you can do it, it's your right. Special permits give the Board more leniency in approving projects or disapproving projects in that the Board can look holistically at the situation in that specific area or for the community at large. A classic example being, say, within our own bylaws, a salvage yard or a, an auto salvage yard or a motel is by special permit in town because it's not necessarily the case that we shouldn't have those, but it is the case that just because the underlying zoning would allow it normally, that doesn't mean it's appropriate everywhere in town. And then that gives the ability to look and have some negotiation back and forth. Just to kind of get everyone on the same page of what the difference in these terms are. Richard, please.
I think the big issue they have is, I may be misunderstanding the Water District, but I think they want to allow, they want the bylaw to allow new treatment plants in Zone One.
Okay, so...
That's correct.
Again, I will come to the public, but I want to make sure that we all agree on what we're talking about here before we invite more voices. And so I'm not looking to shut you out, I'm just trying to meter the conversation effectively so we can hopefully come to some conclusions within the coming couple months. So, are you objecting to the ability to build Zone Two water treatment by special permit? Where the Board can look at it, and again, it doesn't mean, no, but it does mean the Board is looking at the holistic situation. Often that results in things like, basically, that often results in things like looking at it and then some negotiating back and forth to make sure that it works for the community at large and the local community as well. Maybe additional screening or something or things like that start coming into play, or whatever's appropriate in that given scenario.
I don't have an issue with that.
We would have to come to you for a site plan review anyway.
Yes.
So I feel that, you know, we've always, the District's always tried to work well with the community when we're, when we're coming up with plans. If the Board wants to recommend something to the District during site plan review, the District's probably going to, if it's not unreasonable, say yes.
Yeah.
So I don't see the need for a special permit when we already have to come before the Board for site plan review.
So I hear you on that. I have some personal opinions, but I bet there's other opinions as well. Please.
If you want to mine us here.
No, please, just use the microphone.
Just, in the most basic of things here, I mean, I look at these Boards and Commissioners that we all volunteer and do in town, and I look at it as like, what is the benefit to Lunenburg? I mean, I think that's why we're all here, to serve for the better of the town. Okay, so as I look at how some of these things are written, what does it gain the town? What does it gain the residents as a whole? And what I'm seeing here, some of these changes, is I don't see a benefit at all to the residents across the town. You know, the reality is, is that in the next five to 10 years, there's going to be treatment plants in town. It's mandated by Mass DEP. We, as the Lunenburg Water Department, need to provide clean drinking water at the, you know, most affordable cost we can for the entire community. So by adding bureaucracy to something that's already a heavily, you know, permitted procedure, I don't see the, I don't see the benefit to what Lunenburg is going to get out of this. That's just how I feel.
I'm good, thank you. I'm going to turn to the Board for opinions and then, in questions, and then I'm going to turn to members of the public, again, on this narrow component. If, by the way, if at the end we've done all the narrow components and there's still something we've missed, we'll talk about it. Okay? I don't want to leave things off the table, but I'm trying to keep the conversation tight.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Would there be anyone besides the Water District possibly even considering constructing a water treatment plant in Zone Two? Anybody?
I wouldn't see that.
Yeah, nothing I'm aware of.
Right. Mm-hmm. So it's kind of moot. I don't think, I agree with what they're requesting. I don't see the need for a site special permit for something that's already going to require site plan approval and it's only going to ever be applied for by the Water District who is already a public entity.
I feel like, well, my opinion on it is based on my understanding of public comment, but I think it's better to solicit more public comment than just kind of spout off assuming I understand it, I think. Other comment or thoughts from the Board? Glenn.
With a special permit, if they came forward with an excellent plan that the Board agreed with, would that streamline the special permit process, making it close to? would that streamline the special permit process, making it close to the previous?
I think that public comment ends up weighing more heavily, this is my opinion, okay? I would argue that I think public comment ends up weighing more heavily during special permits because they are subjective. Because during a site plan review, site plan approval, it's, again, it's a checklist, right? Do you meet these requirements? And people can speak their mind, but we're looking at checklist effectively. And there's still some subjective, but smaller. But as opposed to kind of being able to look a little more holistically.
Richard. There's two basic differences between site plan review and special permit. First, special permit requires a super majority of the board to vote yes.
That's the other thing.
Four out of five, site plan review, three out of five. Additionally, under special permit, the applicant doesn't have the entitled right to use the property as they proposed. That is a special permission being given. Under site plan approval, the applicant has the right to use the property as they're proposing, but it's subject to the board reviewing criteria and mitigating and identifying mitigation measures if necessary that makes the project more compatible with the neighborhood. It still is a right, and it's harder to deny a site plan approval than a special permit. Special permit is pretty much at the board's discretion. Site plan approval, board has heavier burden to, if they want to deny the site plan approval.
I will say that, and to your point, Mr. McLeod, that in my time on the board, I cannot think of a special permit we have denied. I can think of instances where there's been more back and forth with the butters, with the community at large, to kind of thread that needle a little bit about needs. Because I think people kind of have to come to the bargaining table a little more.
And that's common.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to turn to members of the public. And again, we are talking right now specifically, again, the narrow topic of, we're talking about the site plan, about the by right versus site plan, you know, site plan approval versus special permit for treatment plants in Zones 2 and 3.
Did we get past, yeah, did we get past the, did we get past the Zone 1 already?
I...
Or are you, are you going to?
Oh, no, I don't think, the area we were talking about in the document, to my understanding, was the Zone 2 and 3 section, so that's what we were talking about. Am I incorrect?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
We'll come back to...
So we'll come back to Zone 1. No, we're not, I don't want to leave any topic off the table for y'all. That's not going to be productive.
Joan Pease, 11 Winter Green Court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was taken aback when I listened to the last Water District meeting because I felt criticized for coming to the planning board public hearing and speaking at the hearing. I also felt that they criticized the planning board in the last Water District meeting unfairly because you had a public hearing, and they were upset that they didn't get to write the rule. They said they wanted to write the rule. They wanted to write the revisions, they wanted to write the bylaws. The planning board has a unique position in any town because, as you said, Chair, you're threading the needle between multiple needs. When I listened to the...
Right now she has the floor, and we're going to respect that.
When I listened to the MBTA...
We're getting there. Sorry.
When I listened to the MBTA person speak today, it became obvious to me how many needs you have to reconcile. You have to work those needs together, whether it's commercial, residential, public works. All of those different needs in the town, the education, the growth rate, all of those needs need to be planned for in a unified fashion. No one has ever said the Water District should not have treatment plants. No one has ever said there should be no treatment plants in Zone 2 and 3. No one that I know has ever said that. Zone 1 is a small area, 400 feet around the well. You're going to get back to that.
Yeah, we're going to get to that, that's separate.
The only thing that our group is asking for is that if you're going to allow treatment facilities in Zone 2 and 3 that do not presently exist, there's some small ones there, that you have a special permit so that the residents in these neighborhood communities can have some input into screening, distance from roads, et cetera. No one is being unreasonable, no one is saying no. They're saying, planning board, we want to make use of your wisdom in this situation because in this town, we do have Zone 2s that are less than 50 feet from residential homes. So we need care from you. This water protection bylaw has been up for a vote at town meeting three or four times, and it has been defeated by the citizens. These are the reasons it is defeated. You require a two-thirds majority to pass this bylaw revision. There are hundreds of people who are concerned about that, who are in touch with me. We are simply asking, if you're going to allow it in Zone 2 and 3, you require a special permit so we have a voice as to screening and placement and homes and children and everything else that goes with that. We're not saying no, we're not saying put it miles away with yards of piping. We're simply saying we need to be part of the picture, and you are the avenue through which we get a voice as one of the stakeholders in the situation.
Thank you, Ms. Pease. Mr. Harris, is yours a comment that can wait one moment? If not, that's fine. Okay. I just want to make a comment from, from the guy who sits in the chair position, not from the chair ID. Like, so this isn't management, but this is something I see. I've gotten a lot of people commenting to me, even walking around town, saying, oh, did you hear, and it's about this, it's about, it's about all sorts of meetings. Did you hear what this group said about X? Did you feel upset when this other group did this or said that? And I'm certainly not putting down on Ms. Pease for her comments, because I understand where she's coming from as well. But what I do want to say, that I'm very happy with, we are right now all in the same room trying to, again, it's a different needle threading, but it is trying to find a way forward that works for all of us. So I'm, what I'm very happy about is that we are here and we're discussing in a moderated way, but to try to meet all of those needs, and in that way, we're all pulling in the same direction. We have some different end goal, like different needs, but we're going to get there. Richard, please, thank you. One sec, I want to hear from Mr. Harris.
In response to Ms. Pease's comments, I think it should be noted that you could require a site plan approval, and that still requires a public hearing process, which gives the butters opportunity to comment and be heard. It is very common in site plan approval for, where I've worked in other communities, to attach conditions that require screening and buffering and address issues such as placement of noise generating machinery, hours of operation even. Those are not uncommon conditions that boards deal with on site plan approval. Granted, it's a less strenuous hurdle to go overcome for the applicant, but it does provide a mechanism for public input, public participation, and to address the issues that she raised in terms of buffers and those type of issues that people get concerned about, they're very commonly addressed in site plan approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris.
So, Mr. Chair, the last meeting that I came to, it was not our intention to rewrite the bylaw from the district's standpoint. It was simply to get us all in a room together like we are now and be able to have these discussions so we can come up with something that works for everybody and doesn't go against Mass General law. And Mr. Harris put it very well, as far as a site plan review is another layer on the onion of government. We, the things that aren't said here is, we have to bring anything that we want to do as a district to the district voters as well. So there's another layer that allows for public input when we have to do these projects as well. So I just look at the special site plan review in the Zone 2 as redundancy. That's not needed because there's, there are already those areas that are well-covered through the site plan review and through what we have to bring to our district customers and constituents.
And to make sure, is there, I know generally how the Water District works, but there are a few nuances I'm not as familiar with myself. Are there areas of Zone 2 that would not be represented at a Water District meeting? So let me be more clear. So you, not everyone in town gets to vote at Water District meetings as people within the Water District.
Correct.
Are there sections of Zone 2 that are reasonably near wellheads? I think we can even get more specific, because we're talking about this in the context of not piping water alongways. Are there sections of Zone 2 reasonably near wellheads that are not part of the Water District? Or is all of the Water District...
I think only in Keatings, might be outside the district, Zone 2 will be outside the district.
Not to put words in your mouth, Mr. Chair, but are you basically asking, would there, I'm sorry, would there be residents in town that are outside of the Water District that this Zone 2 may affect that wouldn't be able to vote? Is that...
Yeah, you can put words in my mouth, because that's what I'm asking.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just, just, we're all on the same page here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to gain an understanding of representation at the table in each, and so I'm trying to get, but I'm trying to make sure we're all on the same page about understanding who's represented when, where these decisions and votes happen. So we're not comparing apples and orangutans.
Correct. Not to put, but the Zone 2 at Keatings...
I could be wrong. I'd have to look.
Okay. Put it this way, it's not, it's not a high number.
Yeah, so the Zone 2 from Keatings goes into Lancaster. Zone 2 and Zone 3 extends into Lancaster. So definitely the Lancaster property, they have no, no, no voice. But when we expand the district, typically we do the entire property. So I, now I'm rethinking that we probably did the whole Keatings property. So that probably is in the Zone 2 as well, but that's one person, so.
Yeah, that's, say, that, we're talking about whether or not the amount of land, land isn't what votes, it's humans that vote, and residents. I'm going to turn to the board, because we've all, everyone except me, has been very quiet. So I would love to hear thoughts from us in either direction. I know I have some of my own ideas bubbling, but I am exactly one of five. Can I get, can I say again that we have five active members on the board, and that is so wonderful? Thoughts about special permit versus site plan review, or site plan approval? Because we're not site plan review, we're site plan approval for these reasons.
What does special permit approval bring to the table that isn't already included in the site plan review?
I would ask Mr. Harris to delineate that for us as our resident expert more clearly.
One, special permit is discretionary approval on the board's part. Site plan approval is much less discretionary. Site plan approval, you can attach conditions, but you really have a hard time denying. Special permit, you can attach conditions or you can deny. Special permit results in a requirement that at least four out of five planning board members vote approval, as opposed to simple majority. You know, also, that's the main primary, there's some little tweaks here and there, but that's the fundamental differences between the two of them.
So if I'm understanding, it's fundamentally a question of how much control the planning board has over the two different processes?
Correct.
Okay.
Planning board has the ability to outright deny special permit. Planning board has much more difficult time denying the special, site plan approval. And I'll also note that site plan approval could accomplish the same objectives that Ms. Pease mentioned as special permit without having the burden of a special permit. The biggest challenge of a special permit requirement is when an applicant comes in and a site plan approval, they pretty much know they're going to get approval for the project with some tweaks. And they come in for a special permit, and they've invested tens of thousands of dollars in engineering, they don't know they're going to get approval for the use, they may get outright denied.
All right, so other questions or thoughts from the board? I'm going to have a question coming up to, because I think that some of us, at least me, who would like a little more clarification, but I want to turn to the board. Okay?
I think everything's already been pretty clearly stated. That was the second time that we heard the difference there from Mr. Harris. This is a group that has, that's made up of voting membership. So anything they want to do, they have to get a positive vote from that membership. And it would, it would be really silly of us, I think, in my opinion, as a town to have a water supplier that not only has to get approval from its water takers, but also from the planning board of a special permit that could be denied even after the water takers have voted in support of it. And it makes very little sense to me that we would put that extra caveat on that, especially since it is a public body, and it just, to me, it makes more sense to give them the opportunity to say that, yeah, we will give you this, but it's going to have to conform to the input from the public and our requirements for screening and whatever else comes out of the interaction. It just, it just doesn't make any sense to add that extra layer.
And I want to make sure I understand the layers that do exist. That feeds into my question. So I'm going to tell me, interrupt me and tell me when I'm wrong, okay? You decide, dude, three years ago, get out, yeah, fair. You want to build a new treatment plant, Zone 2, okay? You would come up with a plan, you would, okay?
We would have to pay for a plan. That's a big part of this, too.
Oh, fair.
It's a big financial caveat to this. We would have to have a plan, detailed plan, that we would have to invest a lot of money into.
Before, so that would be before the Water District voted on it?
The Water District would have to, the Water District would have to vote to approve the money to just go get the plan.
Okay, so this is, this, so you, you want, let's say, on 1414 La La Lane, doesn't exist, so we don't have to worry about it, right? It's in Zone 2. We're going to, you want to put it, that, you've kind of figured, and that seems like a good place for a treatment plant. You're going to go to your constituency and say, we want money for this. They're going to, for a plan, they're going to vote to approve money for a plan. Then, once you have a plan, you would go back to your constituency and say, hey, we got the plan, good y'all? And there would be another vote?
Correct, well, in a, in a fashion, we'd have to have a public meeting where we would present the plan to the public, and then we would have to vote to appropriate the money to move forward with the plan.
Okay, and then it would, you'd have your plan, your engineering and everything. It would come to us, and then it'd be our special permit or site plan review or approval, whatever we settled on in the end, then it would come to us for our component. Then it would come to us for our component. So it sounds like there are three, now, is any step in this on your end, are these votes by the commissioners or votes by the district?
It'd be vote, the vote of the district.
Oh, okay. So in order to do this, there would effectively be two votes by the district to approve a plan, to get money for a plan, to approve a plan, then to come here, and it would be another, and then although we don't, we're not a vote of the public, we're a public hearing in one form or another. And then that would be the required steps.
Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, Fran. It would require a two-thirds majority vote because of the amount of money we'd be talking about. So we would have to get a two-thirds majority vote before we could even move forward to build such a structure. And we would probably work towards getting planning board approval before we vote to build a structure. Because that would be another, that layer of input that we would get from your board as to what we're, what we would like to do.
Okay. I'm going to try to play poly, oh, please, go ahead.
So there's also an approval slash review from DEP, is there not? Where does that fall? Is it an approval or a review?
Approval.
Approval. And where in that, where in that line does that fall?
So we would, we would design, we appropriate the money to design the project, and then now it gets submitted to Mass DEP for approval. Upon approval, then we have permission to build, to construct. And then we would start the whole planning board process, the design of the.
So DEP approves it, then you put it to a vote for the water takers?
Yes, to construct the whole facility.
And then you've got to get the permit. After they say, we want it, then you've got to get a special permit from planning board to build it.
That's correct.
I would, we would do site plan review before.
Or we would go to the takers for the, because it may change.
Yeah, so we would do the plan, how are we going to construct this thing? So just so you know, that's like $700,000, $800,000 for that, just that plant. So once that's, the plan is designed, then it goes to Mass DEP for their approval. And then once it's approved, then, then we can construct. And then, then we go, the vote to all the big, the big money. You know, we're probably looking at something near $20 million to do this thing. So, so then, once we get that money appropriated, then now we're in the full process to get it, to get it constructed.
Thank you. All right, great. So I'm hearing a process by which the public gets a direct vote twice, and then at a minimum, no matter what, actually, either way, has a public hearing with the planning board and with a site plan approval. The planning board can then look at it, hear the public input, and put the conditions on saying, okay, but we do need screening or hours of operation or noise level at the border or whatever to make this a palatable project for the public as well. And I, yeah, we've done that many times before with other more commercial or industrial projects. All right. I'd like to turn to members of the public, and I do know Ms. Pease has, I, under the impression that many people here feel comfortable with Ms. Pease speaking for them. I, if, I don't want you to, if I'm like trampling you on accident because you want to say something out there and I haven't called on you, let me know, okay? The goal is voice is being heard, and if you're working through a representative of y'all, that's great. If you are here independently and want to share your voice, that's great, too. The point of these meetings is discussion. But I guess I'd like to turn to the public and say, with these safeguards in place and knowing that the planning board is still there to make sure that whatever is built is not going to impinge upon the local needs of wherever it would be built, can you be comfortable with a site plan approval? If not, I'd love, I think we'd like to know why specifically. Because it sounds like we can meet your needs otherwise, and if we can't, that's valid to know. But we'd love to know how or why. Again, I would just ask you to come on up and share your name and address. If you, if you're in the audience and there's going to be an issue with you coming up and you think you might, like, for the amount of times you're going to speak, we do have some extra microphones in the back that we can have brought out, but it's a little more cumbersome. But if you need it, we'll do it.
Hi, my name is Iris Sinkel, and I'm at 13 Winter Green Court. And I guess I'd just have a question, and maybe a statement. Is there a difference in whether something is being considered for an industrial area versus a residential area? And if not, who looks out for the neighborhood? Is someone, does someone have our interest?
I'm happy to answer that, but board members feel free to answer if you'd rather. That's our job. We're here for the, I'm happy to hear from the Water District, but, and I think, and they serve, I mean, they give people water, which is kind of needed for things like living. That said, they're not our constituency. I mean, they are in the residence of town and everything, but the planning board is an elected board by the citizens of the town. Our job is explicitly to look out for the town. Now, in any elected position, you're going to have different philosophies and thoughts on how to best do that. But the point of the public hearing process is to hear the public. And before I was on the board, there was still a long history of, for years of wanting to hear from the public, and I suspect that will continue indefinitely because that seems to be ingrained into our culture, which I'm grateful for. So I would welcome other input. I can give my interpretation, but I'm not actually, I don't speak for all of us as much as I talk a lot.
I think there's really only one well that's in an industrial area. I think the rest of them are residential.
And for the industrial, in general, there are differences. Within the context of this zoning, it's not taking into account for the treatment plants, industrial versus residential areas. Correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but it doesn't.
You're right.
Okay. However, that's again, when it comes back to the planning board and the public hearing process. Just because you can, I mean, I guess the answer is, yeah, if you, if they were putting something in an industrial process, area, the demands from the public for things like screening, like noise, whatever, I, I don't know what would or wouldn't be appropriate for, so I'm just going to say screening and noise, but whatever would be appropriate for a water treatment plant. The demand from the public would probably be less because if they're also making rocks explode next to it.
Exactly.
Not as much of an issue.
Right.
If it's a residential area, the residents are going to come out. Even if they don't, we're going to be thoughtful about it, but the, y'all are going to come out. You've made that clear, thank you. And that's a sincere thank you, I realize the tone was a little off. Then we're here to look out for you in that process.
Okay. And is it the same if it's the site, I'm forgetting the terms, but is your interest or your, your protection of our needs the same in the site approval or whatever that one was versus the, I'm sorry, I'm just forgetting. You know, we talked about two different ways. Do they need approval or, okay, you understand what I mean?
Yeah, I got it. I understand completely. It's not your job to know all the terms. We don't remember them. That's why we have people like Richard, who's an actual expert as opposed, again. But no, what you've got, no matter what, our charge is the same. Excuse me one second. The difference as described is effectively for a, so for a site plan approval, we can add conditions and we can, and the vote requirement for passing is a majority. Okay?
Okay.
So three out of five.
Right.
For a special permit, then we can still apply conditions. The vote to pass is four out of five, and if that sounds good, I want to point out why it might not be. The vote to pass is four out of five instead of three out of five. And we basically, super simplified, have the right to say, nah, dude, you can't. Oversimplify, but we have the ability to say no easier. Now, what I do want to clarify from board experience is, you heard me earlier, celebrate that we've got a full board of five members. That hasn't happened in years. There are not people beating down the door to be part of the Lunenburg Planning Board. It's okay, there are people beating down the door to be part of the Rutland Planning Board or anything else, okay? It's having things that need a four out of five vote, on one hand feels great because it can be like, oh, then the ducks really have to be in a row. But we can't always vote. If you miss too many meetings, you can no longer vote. And so you can create a scenario where passing a good project that everyone would find, that people, maybe even everyone agrees to, can become much harder because you're dealing with a bunch of volunteers who have schedules. And if two of us miss too many meetings, then getting it passed is a much bigger pain, much bigger pain in the butt.
Well, so let me ask you a question. If, if we were talking about land next door to your house, which one of those two would you want?
Truthfully? I, so I can, I, my opinion is, my opinion changed tonight a little bit. Coming in here tonight, me personally, and others would have, probably might have different opinions. Coming in here tonight, I felt really confident that site, that special permit was the best way to go. Because I really wanted the planning board to have control over that. And I inherently trust the planning board, but I'm probably biased in that for obvious reasons. I hadn't processed, I hadn't thought about myself, how many other steps there are in the process. About the multiple public vote, not just, not just board votes, but votes by members of the public, at least one of which by a super majority of two-thirds, that need to happen to get there. With those extra checks in place, I think I would be very comfortable with site plan approval. Because to get to the point that it's next to my house, two-thirds of the Water District, like, the public has spoken twice, at least one of those, by a two-thirds majority, to say it should be here. And then there's still protections in place where I can be heard to make sure that it's, that it's going to be done in a way that doesn't impact me. I, I understand not wanting development. I live in terror of the day that the property across the street from me might get sold and developed. I get it. But there's a lot of protections in place to make sure that it's done in a way, in my opinion, that is, that can protect everyone's interests. But I also see hands and people aren't going to agree with that, and I want to hear from other voices. But I also want to give the board a chance to respond to that, too, in case you have thoughts you want to share. Because it was asked at me, but we're aboard. Hearing none. Then we'll hear from y'all next, thank you.
Andy Starvasky, 8 Winter Green Court. I want to draw attention to what you were talking about, you saying the public gets to vote before it even comes to the board. It's not the entire town of Lunenburg. It's only the Water District voters that get to vote before it comes to you. That's why having a special permit might be applicable in this situation. The people voting on the Water District don't represent the town. Only the Water District voters. They're not part of the town government. So when we come to voting with the planning board with these projects, having the ability to have the extra special permit is probably something the planning board should have because this is a very unique situation. They talk about the public gets to vote. No, only the Water District users get to vote. So that's where a special permit should be in the back pocket of the planning board because you represent the entire town. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, the Water District's been waiting as well, so you'll be next after the District.
Can you walk me through the, the special permit process? How many, if, if we applied for a special permit versus a simple site plan review, how many, are we talking about multiple meetings? Do we still have to do site plan review after we get a special permit?
One or the other. Process is going to be, there's some little differences here or there, functionally the same.
Okay.
Again, the difference is going to be, the board has the ability to say, an easier ability to say absolutely not. Again, that isn't common. I don't want to imply to anyone, those who might be putting their hopes on special permit or those who might be fearing a special permit, that a flat-out no to a special permit is not a common thing. It can happen. Like, I haven't seen it. And then otherwise, it's very similar. The vote to get through is going to be four out of five versus five out of five. But again, as well, if you look at the board's voting history, a case of us being split three to two, or some equivalent thereof, is rare. It's not that it doesn't happen, but because of the processes, and frankly, something of the collaborative nature of what planning board work is, I don't think our votes end up there as frequently.
And one other point.
Richard's going to have his hand after that, so I.
Just to the previous speaker. I think everybody that's here tonight that is in opposition of some of the things that we are bringing forward, they're all water takers. I don't know, I don't know of anybody here that is not. So they are represented. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hear from our, Richard, who's our expert. You can't see his hand up because it's behind y'all's heads. Richard, please.
I was just going, I just want to suggest that on a project like a water treatment plant, I would expect the timeframe for planning board review and action would probably be the same, whether it's site plan approval or special permit, because you probably can go through the same issues and same revisions and the process, I don't see a substantial difference in terms of the burden on the applicant, other than in fact, they have to be able to persuade a super majority of the planning board that it's, it meets the criteria for approval versus a simple majority.
Thank you, Richard.
I'd like to add to that, but I'll wait my turn.
Please.
So the other thing is the super majority, they're requiring the four out of five. Oftentimes, what we've done in the past is if we, we have less than the super majority and we've already got a Mullen Rule situation where one member has missed a meeting, we will, we will oftentimes skip over that, right? So that we, we will pull it from the agenda so that we can continue to hear it with at least the four voting quantum. So that would be a potential extension of time.
And that's a, that's a fair point. When I was concerned about it, I, my mind always goes back to when I kind of got booted for six months because apparently my tongue tried to kill me. Don't get cancer, it's no fun. If someone offers it to you, say no. Don't want any. Richard?
Touch on, Mr. Allison, said, it's been my experience and my previous drive before retired, that if you told an applicant that you only have four members at the meeting tonight, the fifth one isn't there, most commonly, an applicant for a special permit who are asked to have the hearing continued. the fifth one isn't there, most commonly, an applicant for a special permit will ask to have the hearing continued, so they have all five members present. Site plan approval is less of a problematic, though they go with the four members, even three members being present. But special permit does potentially lengthen out if a member is absent.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience, please come on up.
Barbara Turkington, 110 Royal Furd Drive. I'd like us to go back to thinking about the bylaws that we're talking about tonight, and we're looking for what voters are thinking and what voters are looking for. And voters are really looking for the most stringent regulations to make sure that their needs are heard. And in a voter's mind, I think, I can only speak for one voter, but in a voter's mind, a special permit is more, is a more stringent regulation to go through, and therefore would be what would be preferred. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Ms. Pease.
We are all working really hard on this for a really long time. We are all tired of working really hard on this for a really long time. We would all like to see this tied up with a nice bow and everybody happy. The way you're going to get a two-thirds majority at town meeting in the fall is to have it as a special permit. You're going to, you're going to make the meetings, people are going to come. If it takes two weeks longer, that's not the end of the world. But the voters have spoken repeatedly on this, and it's, it's the same group, we're going to be honest with you. It's the same group that is very concerned about having it in their backyard, right on the shore of a lake, which has other concerns as well. I think that if you really want to move forward with this in the most timely fashion, the best way is to make it a special permit. If you don't do that, I think you really risk having, you'll be right back here again next year, doing the same thing over again, because it won't get a two-thirds majority at town meeting. There is serious concern out there. And so there's, that, that should, in my mind, be something that you consider.
And this, actually, that, that kind of flows into a question I wanted to bring to the water district.
Mr. Chair, just, are we still on, we, we, are we still on zone two?
Yeah, yeah, we're still on zone two. Yep. Yep, no, zone one's going to be another can of worms, understood.
No problem.
Understood.
Just wanted to make sure, word.
Yep. So, I, I don't, ultimately, the board's going to discuss as well on our own at meetings and, and get things and keep this discussion going, but I kind of want to get your opinion on this as well. Because this is a thought that I, I had going in. I'm not personally convinced of the need for a special permit anymore myself. However, politics are politics, right? Like, part of, part of lawmaking is, yeah, it's like sausage, you know? Could you be comfortable with the idea of the special permit? Because that might be what can get the rest of a good water protection thing together. Again, we're talking about zone two, we're not talking about zone one yet.
So, the, the answer, me, personally?
Yeah.
Is 100% no. And I'm going to base it on just my principles of integrity.
Yeah.
Okay? As Ms. Pease has spoken, and she, she's very well-voiced in this, and I do appreciate all her input, her presentation to you right then and there speaks what I said the first thing when I got up on this microphone. I'm here for the town of Lunenburg as a whole. I want, we all live here, and it's not one special group that is, should dictate the terms of how things are done. They're well organized, they're powerful in numbers. They're passionate about their thing, and I, I can, I can give them that. But as we sit here as elected officials, we need to look at the whole picture, the whole town. And I understand what you're talking, politics is part of this. I found out the hard way here. However, I've yet to put my principles aside for the politics. You guys are the voting board members. You need to look inside and be like, "Does this make sense? Does this not make sense?" And that's all there is to it, so that's how I feel about it. I, I don't like how it happens where you need to shake this can to get this one to go. We don't need to do that here. We can look at things in black and white, yes and no. Does this work? Does this make sense? Yes, no. Next issue. We'll, we'll go through this all night. That's personally how I approach things.
I'm going to ask, I think we've exhausted the topic of zone two, boy howdy, but I think there was some ideas to tease out from the group. Anything else from the board on zone two? And, and this, the water treatment plants and everything? All right. Wake up my computer.
If you guys need chargers, I can.
Thank you. If you, I don't know if you heard down there, Logan said there are chargers if need be. Thank you.
Doing fine.
Thank you. So, let's move on to, go to other sec, and we might be going back, I don't know if zone one's further forward or ahead, but we've discussed the zone two, three, treatment plant concerns. What other concerns would you like to bring to the board tonight?
Have we, have we, have we discussed?
The H. Yeah, that was, that was the one I think we were just discussing.
Well, is that the zone two or the?
Another permitted.
Section F, right? Section F?
Yeah.
Section F?
So moving forward, we'll be starting with section G, I think.
Well, no, there was still some, there was a lot, a lot of stuff in that.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, moving forward in the idea of doing more, that might be moving backwards in the document.
Yeah, you're saying there's permitted in site plan review and.
Permitted uses.
Yeah, I think you got an old one.
I do have. But is it still in there, under F and H?
There's F.
May.
H, right.
Do you mind, do you two mind figuring off this?
Oh, no, we got it. Yeah, it was the H ones we were discussing earlier.
Okay.
Remove the, shall not include construction of new treatment works and related in the zone two. Right, the zone one, zone two, zone three, which is zone one is crossed out. Following uses are permitted, and, but shall not include construction of new treatment works and related. But Mr. Harris mentioned that in another spot it is approved, so.
So looking to have that removed from line H.
What I said is, under the permitted uses, it's not allowed, but is, the language for permitted uses says, unless it's allowed under other sections by special permit or site plan approval. And later on, section, subpart H, I think it is, by special permit, was zone two.
So, what section are you wanting us to look at now?
That was F, section F, subsection H.
F?
Those, we did discuss that quite earlier, so.
So, section F, H, you're saying?
Yep.
Construction, maintenance, repair.
Enlargement, yep.
Enlargement of existing, blah, blah, blah. But shall not include construction of new treatment, treatment works and.
And related.
And this is talking about which zone?
So it'd be zone two and zone three.
Okay. I thought what we were just talking about was the same
Yes.
thing.
Okay.
That, so my understanding is there's an, that says, Richard, could you help us understand? Because it sounds like this says you can't build new treatment facilities, but there's another part that says we can, and that's what we've been talking about.
But that, but, um, subpart, whatever, three, it's on, on page six. It does not allow in zone two or three unless it's permitted by site plan approval or special permit. So if you skip down to part H, uses and activities requiring a special permit on page eight, that is where it's allowed by special permit.
So, as the wording currently is, it's saying, the, the part that, that you're citing there feeds into the whole special permit thing. So if we were to go and change to site plan approval, some of these might, wordings might change, but right now.
Correct.
Right now, that doesn't say we, even though it says in that one sent, like, that one paragraph there, that we, you can't build it. The answer is actually, in this document, you can, yeah, you can't build it, and then later, unless you're doing it by special permit.
Right.
So, that's what we've been discussing.
So we'd like to take out the first part, that you can't build it, and we'd like to stake out the special permit.
Yes, understood.
Okay.
Great. So I think we've, we have beaten zone two and three water treatment plants to death tonight.
I agree.
But, good, we've all, so let, what other parts of this document? Because I think there's discussion about zone one.
Zone one is a critical one.
Is what?
That's the critical one. That, that's the one that's going to be the most difficult for the people in the audience.
Sure.
That's the most critical one for us, that we have to do treatment in zone one. We have to have a.
We just discussed zone two and three, now it's redisessed with, in zone one.
Okay, where is the wording in here about that? Or Richard, I'll take your input as well.
Okay, you go under permitted uses on page five. Permitted uses, paragraph two, the following uses are permitted within zone one. But the first paragraph, item one, irrespective of the permitted uses in the underlying district, only the following uses are permitted within the respective zones. Therefore, if it's not listed as a permitted use in zone one, it's not allowed. Unless, unless there's elsewhere that says by special permit or site plan approval, which is not. So, the essence of it in this bylaw draft, if you don't list treatment plants as permitted use of some kind in zone one, it's not permitted. Period.
So as written right now, treatment plants in zone one, not allowed?
Period.
Period.
Under no circumstances.
Okay. You say this is bad? Please tell, educate us.
So, yes, so all the sources, the wells are located on that, the, there's a 400-foot radius around it, and you want the treatment facility as close to that source as possible, otherwise you're, you're running water mains to wherever. If you, in this case, I mean, the, the big push is to do the Keating well. If, if we have to get pushed outside the zone one, now we're buying land, even in the zone two. So, and around Keating's all industrial land. Talking some pretty huge money there. So, I, I just think this is out of line, Lancaster Rav, same thing. We're, we're putting, I don't even know where, Lancaster Rav, somewhere up on a hill where we need to, can't get enough land. It just puts another extreme burden on, on the water district customers, and it, and it's not needed. I mean, we already do treatment at all the zone ones now, each well has its own treatment. They have the, the treatment number. Hickory Hills well does potassium hydroxide, phosphate, and chlorine. All the wells on Lancaster Rav do the same, sodium hydroxide and chlorine. Keating's just does sodium hydroxide. So, but they all have a treatment ID from Mass D E P. So they're already doing, they're all full classified as treatment plants. So I, I don't think this, I mean, we're already, we're already doing it, so.
Okay.
And I got, I got, I mean, this is the big concern, the Hickory Hills well, like, like Mr. Bersh mentioned that, you know, we, we tried to build a treatment plant on Lancaster Rav, so we would not construct anything on the Hickory Hills well site. So, I mean, we, we tried to do it the right way, we tried to do what they, they wanted us to. No, no, no building on that property, but they voted it down. So, okay, so now it's squashed. Now, now they're trying to cover other things that might happen there. The, the area is not large enough to put the treatment plant that you would need on that property. So it needs to be relocated somewhere. So it's, it's not impossible. So, my thinking, and I'd need the board's approval to do this, but what, what if we did a easement on that property? We already have a very restrictive easement on there already. But what if we did another easement for that property?
That property be?
Hickory Hills.
Okay.
Just the Hickory Hills, because this, this thing is affecting all, all the zone ones everywhere. And I don't think any of them care about the zone ones for Keating's or Lancaster Rav. They're mostly concerned with this specific one. So what if we did a very restrictive easement that limited us on the building size that we could do? So, I'm thinking, I'm not sure, we have to come up some numbers, maybe a 5,000 or 8,000 square foot building, bigger, larger than what's there. And I don't really know what size we could put, because what if we needed some kind of pretreatment? And we, to treat it before it gets to the official treatment plant? So I'm just trying to think, is there something we can do? This is more probably directed to these people, that we can address their concerns and get them to support this thing. Because I'm 100% behind in development. You know, they're, they're going to do all the safeguards.
I'm going to interrupt for one second. Ms. Pease, I do see your head, you don't have to keep it up. It is going to be a bit before we get there? Because I kind of, I want to flush out what they're talking about and hear back and forth a little there. What's that? Okay. Great, I, I still want to hear the rest of their thoughts to make sure that all the ideas are out there, but thank you for letting us know, and you, you're on deck, but the deck's kind of maybe an eighth of a mile away. If you don't like bad metaphors, maybe you're at the wrong board meeting. Okay, so, what I'm hearing, and I'm going to try to rephrase some of it to make sure I understand, make sure others understand. It's great that we could allow treatment on zone two, but that's a lot of money, because you'd have to get separate land as opposed to the land you control, which is zone one. Do I understand that point correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I think I also hear you saying, and Ms. Pease may have some thoughts as well, that you're wondering if there is a way to draft language so that effectively, I mean, if we're us calling spades, calling a spade a spade, there, there might be a way to draft language such that treatment plants could be built in zone ones, but not Hickory Hills.
Correct, but I don't know how you would put that as part of this watershed protection.
Yeah, and so, is there any, one more sec. Is there anything else you said that I haven't restated generally? In that section?
I think you got it.
Okay, cool. Again, I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same stuff here. I'm going to invite Ms. Pease up, because she's saying she thinks she has a compromise, and and do I love compromises if everyone likes them?
We all want this to be worked out. How about no treatment plant in zone one within 400 feet of a lake? It would have no impact on your Keating site. It would have no impact on your Lancaster site. It would protect the neighborhood, the tiny area where there's houses right up against it, where there's a lake right up against it. And so, the zoning law could say no treatment plants within 400 feet of the shore of a lake in zone one. Other treatment plants in zone one are allowed.
Thank you. Now, before you respond, I'm going to turn to Richard, because before I, we even entertain this notion. Richard, is that legal?
Yeah, I, I don't see why you couldn't do that. We'd have to define what a lake is, and I know that seems obvious to everybody. But you do have to find lake. But yeah, I think it's, it's legal and it could be done.
Okay, and again, for, just for everyone's edification, I ask if it's legal, because there's rules about how you can write zoning, right? You can't just, as Ms. Pease alludes to, as you've alluded to, that there's You can't just, as Ms. Pease alludes to, as you've alluded to, that there's ways to make sure you're writing it so that it's actually viable as opposed to being viewed negatively by the AG or whatever.
Yeah, what, what I'd want to do is, if we're, if you're going to entertain this, is probably where the treatment plants for groundwater can be located within, or can, yeah, treatment plants for groundwater can be located within zone one, and then have conditions subsequent to being at least 400 feet from the shoreline of a lake.
Hmm, okay. So, the, the idea's been put forward about, you can't, again, Richard has the more technical wording, but you can build a treatment plant in zone one, but not within 400 feet of a lake.
Hickory Hills is a groundwater well, it's not a lake well.
That, that's, yes. Now, that is, that is understood, but the, that this would theoretically, at least, keep Hickory Hills from having a treatment plant at it, um, but would otherwise, um, make the other sites accessible.
True, for the existing sites, Lancaster Rav and Keating's, that would definitely help the Hickory Hills well. Uh, future wells are located on Lake Shirley, on Peninsula's. So if Hickory Hills doesn't get back online, we're going to Lake Shirley. So that would be very difficult for, so another whole, that would be a whole nother setback that, how do we, how do we address that? So, I mean, and then the other, where I mentioned, do we need some kind of pretreatment? Uh, I don't know if we'd need to enlarge our structure down there. That's why my thinking was if we did a restrictive easement that limited us to what we could build, not a full-blown treatment plant, down, make it a downsized, you know, do some pretreatment thing, I don't even know what it would be, but I don't want to handcuff us and, and, you know, make it a easement that we, we can't do anything and we need to. So I don't want to do that. So I want to just leave a little bit of, you know, wiggle room that if we do have to put an addition on, we, we could have the ability to do it. With her, the 400 foot, that, that's, uh, we wouldn't be able to do that. If we did 100 foot, maybe we could sneak it in, because I mean, we did, we did measurements to stay 100 feet from the wetlands, so we, we might be able to do 100 feet.
Once again, if we take this all at face value, as the Water Department says to me, we want to provide clean water to the residents of Lunenburg, all of them, to include Hickory Hills and to, to include everybody else. Before we put any brick in the ground, we need to go through a slew of approval already, along with two-thirds votes, pretty much twice on our end. Okay? So all these extra wickets in the works are just going to prolong this process and make it much more expensive. Then, we have this bylaw in here that we need to make sure meets Mass DEP, and may pigeonhole us further down the line. I look at all of this, what's the benefit to the town? And that's really my, my basic point of looking through this whole thing. How do we as a whole benefit from imposing these bylaws? I don't see it, and like I said, and I'm concerned about everybody in town. I, I just don't see by making these new stringent rules and regulations are going to help the community of Lunenburg. I, I don't see it. You know, that's, that's, that's my opinion.
Mm-hmm. Ms. Pease, please come on up.
The water district voters vote based on finances. The DEP passes their approval or disapproval based on what's good for water systems. The planning board plans for the whole town, everybody, every single person in the town. That is why we are coming to the planning board, because the planning board interweaves, threads the needle, as your chair said, and pulls all these pieces together. And we think that you are reasonable and you will do a good job with this. We don't fear you. I mean, you, you, you're going to do what's best for the town, but you are the place where the integration of all the different facets in the town come together. You're probably the most powerful board in town. Economic development, schools, everybody.
May I just interrupt you to say, "Take that, Caesar." We're coming for it, you know.
But, but we, we want to have our needs met. DEP is not thinking about the neighborhood needs. Water district users are not thinking about the neighborhood needs. They're not. They have other goals. You're the, you're the body that thinks about the neighborhood needs and plans the overall picture. This is part of the overall picture.
I'm going to turn to the board. We've heard a lot. I've, I've been trying to do my job and moderate and tease out ideas for us to hear. Ultimately, I mean, the town is ultimately the decision makers in terms of the vote at town meeting. We are ultimately the decision makers in terms of writing the, putting down the ink that gets to town meeting. I, I would just like to hear our thoughts, our opinions, our questions, whatever they are, and if we don't have any, we can not have any. I, I enjoy hearing that too, because I'd like to hear your lovely voices.
Um, so I'm going on a little bit of an assumption here, uh, between like a site plan review or a special permit. What happens when they fail? Like, we've been told that the site plan review is much more structural, and as long as everything comes in and it's probably lined up, it's not going to hang up, it's not going to have any issues. Assumedly, if there is something that's out of line, they take it back, they change it, they come back with it again. What is our criteria for saying no when it comes to a special permit, and what happens after that?
I think that's a very good question for our technical expert. By which I mean Richard.
I'm, um, hold on just a second.
Yep.
Your zoning bylaws outlines criteria for acting on special permits. Um, I'm trying to pull that up.
If I may, uh, since it's a four-person, it's a supermajority vote, I would think that it'd simply come down to two people saying no. I think it's that simple.
Mike, Mike, sorry, I was, unclear my question. When you bring a site plan review up, we're here to review the site plan. What, what is happening when somebody, when it's, what are we looking for that's different between a site plan review and a special permit? What does a special permit bring to the table besides a higher bar of vote that we get out of it?
And part of that is, effectively, the ability to say, "That's not appropriate here." Um, again, I'm going to use a motel as an example, um, because they buy a special permit in town. If I want to open a retail shop in a commercial area, and I meet the requirements for a retail shop, uh, the board may put extra requirements on it, like they may say, "Yeah, but that section is, has a lot of foot traffic, so we're going to want some, like, limited curb cuts with clear markings, maybe we're going to want this or that to make it." But, but ultimately, I'm going to be able to open that retail shop. I'm going to have to go through some hoops.
Yeah.
But I'm going to be able to do it as long as I'm going through the, like, whatever hoops the board puts forward. The board can't say, "But retail isn't appropriate there." With a motel, that's when we can look at it and say, because it's by special permit, we can say, "Yeah, this is a commercial use, but you're bordering on residential, and it's a very quiet neighborhood, and you're proposing a motel that's going to be very loud for whatever, because it's the loud honk-your-horn-at-night motel or stuff," like, whatever. But like, that, that, what you are suggesting just really, and again, this is oversimplified, isn't appropriate there, that it can't be made to work. And then we have the ability to say, "That isn't okay." It's not, again, I haven't seen it happen, but I've only been on the board four years, but.
And is that, where a site plan review has checklists that we are going through, is a special permit effectively much more just our discretion?
And checklists.
And checklists.
There's still going to be the checklist.
Sure.
And then there's also our discretion. And again, Richard, interrupt me if I am misspeaking and misrepresenting.
Uh, you're right, and as Mr. Allison said, effectively, it means two members of the board saying, "No, applicant, you have not demonstrated to our satisfaction that you meet the criteria that this is an appropriate use for this area."
Mr. Chair, I, just, just to me to clarify a bit on that.
Yeah.
I think the other portion of what we're talking about.
I think that'd be a, Mike, sorry.
Uh, what we're talking about here is, uh, something like an A and R lot or a building permit per process, uh, that individual that owns, uh, commercial property acts here, can simply fill out his building permit and, and submit it and go, where this special process says, "No, now it needs to come to the board first to get voted on for the town." The difference, I think, a little bit, when we're talking about here is what the Water Department is at, in how we would go about this process, it's not like we can go directly to the building permit and get a permit. We've already had to go through three votes just to get to this point, where this tool that is used with your special permit is something where an average citizen who's a owner of land is coming to put in, like you say, a motel right next to this place. That's why you have a special permit, if I'm using the word correctly, with, with the planning board.
I am going to pause this here, uh, because at this point, I'm going to entertain discussion from the board about special permits, but I think each, each group here, you've made your opinion about special permits well understood and why. And, um, I agree with all of you, which is unfortunate, because that doesn't super help. Um, but, like, that's a good point. Oh, that's a good point. But now I want to get the board's thoughts on it, because ultimately, again, it's the board who's going to put ink to paper, and I want to make sure that our thought, that this is, I mean, it's a board discussion, right? Technically, we're not required in public comment. Good golly, are we wanting it. That's not implying you shouldn't be here. Um, but, yeah. So if that answers your question, Tim, I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm also back and forth, but one of the things I, I like about, um, the special, well, first of all, I, I like the idea of less regulation and making things easier. A little less hesitant, you know, doesn't bother me as much in this point, because it's against another, essentially a government, um, agency. But what I like about the special permit, um, and this is not indicating where I would come down on, but what I like about that is, unfortunately, with all these boards, as we've seen, you know, whether it's us with CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, uh, you know, we hire specialists, experts that are fed to us by, you know, through state grants. So the, the process quickly gets out of, you know, whatever board's hands, and we're really at the, at the mercy of the, the, the experts, as they're, as they're called. So one thing I like about the special permits is that I would think that that would influence those agencies, the experts, the engineers, that there's extra scrutiny in this, and they really have to, you know, dot their i's, cross their t's. Um, and if it is presented in a, you know, a compassionate way, in, you know, addressing everybody's issues with concessions, that it would be little difference between special permit and site plan review. I know that's a little, you know, probably naive to think that way, but that's just one of the thoughts that kind of bumps through my head.
Other thoughts about that, or about water treatment in zone one? Let's, uh, there's a, there's a something that needs to be somethinged. Don't laugh, I'm running out of metaphors. Um, I'm wondering, because, so what I've heard so far. Uh, Richard, please.
Um, just a point of clarification for the district. Did I hear them say that they currently do treatment at each of the wells? So they have a treatment operation at each well that already, right?
Oh, no, you got to stay into the mic. I know.
That is correct. We treated all the sources.
And that includes the Hickory Hills well?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So any treatment, so I think at minimum, we need to include in zone one, at least the ability to, uh, what, how's it phrased here? Just a second. Maintain repair existing public drinking water supply related facilities. Uh, so we need to include that at a minimum, and what the board might want to consider is, when you include that, then we could also look at providing that, whether the site plan view or special permit to allow for expansion of, or, or construction of a new treatment plant related facility, uh, by special permit. So, but then, I think that's something to take into consideration, because as is written now, it, in theory, doesn't even allow maintenance of the existing treatment law plant, treatment works.
Okay. And we're, we're getting a, a thumbs up from members of the community out there acknowledging that, yeah, we probably do need to be able to maintain what's there, um, with a special permit for, uh, well, listen. I guess, yeah, Ms. Pease, I would ask you to come up, please, and share your thoughts a little more, because there's a little ambiguity there that I think we'll want to hear.
We acknowledge that any existing plant in zone one would need to be maintained. Absolutely, no problem. Zone one is where the Kona depression is around a well. There really should be no bulldozers in any zone one. So, but maintaining any existing plant is fine. Um, and in the spirit of compromise, if the planning board could see its way through to putting special permits for zone one and two, I don't care about zone three, I don't think anybody cares about zone three. It's far enough away, I think everybody's okay with you doing that in zone three. So if the planning board could see its way to having a special permit for zone one and two, for any new construction of any kind in zone one and two, a special permit, we might be able to reach a compromise.
I, I would like to see, any new construction in zone one and two of treatment?
Any new construction of water facilities.
Yes.
In zone one and two would require a special permit.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't suggesting that a, someone putting up an overly large shed was going to need a special permit in zone two. Just, I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Any, any new water treatment facilities in both zone one and two would require a special permit. That would allow the planning board to make site visits to the unique, which I have specified before, situation of one of the wells in town, in a densely populated residential neighborhood, and it would allow them the ability to look at it carefully before it was approved, and, and maybe say, "No, probably not," but at least make sure everything was A-OK with the residents. But that would have to be for zone one and two, and, and that would be a compromise we could live with.
And that would also give the public hearing process, so that you, in addition to us seeing it, your voice would be very well heard, would be able to be heard as appropriate.
And we would feel confident that if something were unreasonable to a majority of the board, that they would act in an ethical, appropriate way. So we would be putting our faith in you.
Thank you. I see some commissioners discussing, and I think we'll let them do that. This is where I try to give y'all a nice dad joke, but man, we're, we're at my bedtime, I'm going to be honest. I'm getting boring as my hair turns more and more gray.
Please don't.
I miss what Richard said.
He said, "Please don't."
It was better than your dad jokes.
Got my 11-year-old really laughing in the backseat the other day. That was good.
We're not making any decisions, right? You're just going to, we're going to just?
No. We're, no, there's going to be, so let me actually, let me lay this out for everybody. We are slated- We are slated to discuss all this again in three meetings. So in late August is the next time the board is going to be slated to have a discussion about this. No decisions are being made yet. The point of this is to keep discussing, redraft, come back and try to find something, I mean technically, try to find something the board likes. But I think the goal for the board is to find something everyone likes.
I'm with you, yep. Not to add much more to your thought process, but the current Zone Two bylaw has protective zones, Zone Ones for potential well sources on it. So that it, by having the Zone One around it, it protects them from, so no one could do any development that would eliminate that as a available source. So we have two on Lake Shirley and there's one on Goodrich Street. I just, my recommendation, I brought this up to the board, but would be to put that on the new map so we can protect those. So, I mean, because Lunenburg is very limited on sources of water. So I think the ones that we found, we need to, we need to protect if possible. So just something to think about, too.
And I hear you. That is, to my understanding, and that's not a problem when I say this, it's an entirely novel suggestion, correct? We haven't discussed this before in any capacity. That's not in here right now.
Correct, correct.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't an idea that was already kind of addressed that I'd somehow missed in the 5,000 iterations of this.
No, that's tied to the map that this refers to.
Got it.
That new map.
And those are over by Lake Shirley, you said primarily?
Correct. Idaho Road, Sunset Lane, and then there's one off of Goodrich Street.
Do we have those on any of our documentation? I'm asking Richard and Logan and board members.
Not that I'm aware of. The Zone One and Zone Two delineations are taken from Mass GIS, which obtained them from Mass DEP.
Yeah, the map was town meeting vote 2009.
Okay.
When it was adopted.
All right, great. And do you, it's not an official decision. Does your board have an opinion about the, about the compromise suggested about special permit for Zone One and Two as a way to, I mean, as a, you can say no, that's your drug.
Yeah, that, I was a yes and a no when I just asked them. I think we can, to me, I thought that was a great compromise. I think that's workable, but we'll see what they say. So we have a board meeting on Wednesday, we can discuss it and see what they, what they think.
If you wouldn't mind discussing that and then passing that along to myself, Richard and Logan, that would be whatever, if you come to a, if you have an agreement coming out of it, that I think we'd like to hear that.
Okay, perfect.
And Richard, please.
My intent is to make revisions based on tonight's discussion, and I will indicate that option as one item that was a possible amendment so that it'll be in there for the August 26th discussion. Because as you know, after August 31st, I won't be involved anymore.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification. What is happening in August? Is it a public hearing or is it just a zone planning board meeting?
It is, is August, if I remember correctly, is not a public hearing, right?
No.
Okay, yeah. No, it's another discussion like this. So our goal was to have two discussions for the planning board now and in August, and we planned those two based on anticipated board attendance. Then, that, the goal was then hopefully with all these discussions and input, to be able to put forward a draft and have a public hearing, hoping that it's not a, it's not a draft that requires a ton more input. I mean, it's a public hearing, people still will and should voice their input then. But starting now, we're trying to get closer and closer to that goal so the public hearing is more of a formality and we're not putting all the discussion so close to town meeting.
Can you give me the dates for these things?
Can you?
For people who plan?
Yes.
Another discussion, August when?
August, what is our second meeting in August?
August 26th.
August 26th.
And when would the public hearing be?
Not yet decided, but we have, I mean, that hasn't been scheduled yet.
Month?
Probably September would be the goal. So that, that way, if there's technical issues, if there's, the goal is to have it well before town meeting in November. Not to be meeting shortly before, but be well ahead so everyone's on the same page, plenty ahead of time. So hopefully town meeting becomes an important thing, but like a routine thing at that point. And this way we should, again, if there's an instance where Zoom fails us and we're not going to meet, we're not up against the clock like we were last time.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Richard.
My recommendation's been to, if possible, schedule public hearing for September 23rd. So, because that would then give you a couple of meetings at least before town meeting meets. Presumably town meeting won't meet until sometime in November.
Mm-hmm.
So you have two meetings in October to wrap it up if you need to make further changes.
Great. And so most likely September 23rd, but that isn't officially on the calendar yet. But I think it would be my, as the board chair who puts things on the agenda, it would be my intent, absent different input from the board, that would change my mind, but to do it then. Other thoughts we have, points we want to discuss? I kind of, I mean, we're going to hear what the water district board has to say. And if they like the compromise, we're not obligated to go with any compromise reached between groups. We're not obligated to go with anything. We can go rogue. Ha, no water in town anymore. But thoughts? All right. Hearing done. Yeah, please.
Just out of curiosity, what's the enforcing authority on, on town bylaws? Who is the enforcing authority?
On, I think part of the answer is which bylaw, but because, I mean, the police come for a noise ordinance, right? But for zoning in this, who would that be, Richard?
The building commissioner under state law is the zone enforcement officer.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Great, you're welcome. And again, just for public clarification as well, and Zone One's a little weird in there because there's other enforcement that the DEP does as well within Zone One.
Just like to thank, we're going to adjourn our meeting.
Yeah.
Like to thank the board for their time and the residents that came out. I thought this was a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, can I say, can I say really sincerely, thank you to the water commissioners, thank you to the members of the public, thank you to the planning board for sitting through this. This is, in my opinion, the good side of politics. But thank you for, everyone for coming out and being heard and discussing. Appreciate it. All right. Don't worry, we're not done.
My phone says I'm supposed to be getting ready for bed.
You've adjourned this part of the meeting, this discussion?
Yes, we're done with this discussion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I am just going to call up our agenda.
It's pledge time. I forgot.
Oh my goodness, pledge time.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome. I am perfectly willing to still have this discussion tonight. I am willing to punt it to a future meeting, but I won't be here for our next two. But what would the board like to do? Would they like to continue with this discussion? I don't think it'll be a fraction as long, but I don't think there'll be zero discussion either before we kind of have a vote for how we want to proceed.
I quite honestly don't think we really need much discussion. I think just a vote would probably.
I disagree because I.
We've discussed it so many times.
We haven't though. And I guess my argument, well, I guess my argument would be, I feel like ambush is the wrong word, but, because it's not negative, but people have said, how come it's this way? And there hasn't been a chance to have any prepared thoughts on it. And at least, there are reasons that I have not been having us say the pledge within the context of the meeting. And I think they're relevant. I think we live in a world that lacks nuance, and I think nuance is important in some of these topics. I think if we're going to make a decision and try, I'm going to be real. If we're going, if we're looking to override the chair, the chair's opinion on how to run a meeting, which is the chair's right to do, I think a discussion's appropriate. I'm cool with waiting for it, too, and I'm not the one chairing the next two meetings, so you can strongarm Mr. Wilsner into anything you want. Because it's not like it's board policy, it's just what I do. So I'm fine discussing it, but I'm not fine just voting and being done with it because I think there's thought involved.
I don't. I, I struggle to find that it has a place in a town meeting. We're not here for the federal government. We're not here for the country as a whole. We're here for our neighbors. And a pledge to our neighbors is much more important at the start of a meeting like this than to the heraldry of the powerful. But that's my opinion on the pledge as it relates to town government.
I guess, my thing is, I hear a lot of things thrown out that, leading up to it, that I don't agree with. I hear, I've heard constituents and people say, well, it's respectful to veterans to say it, or it's disrespectful to veterans to say it. While I don't know that that matters in the context of a meeting about the land use in Lunenburg, but I also don't think it's disrespectful to veterans to not say the pledge for the same reason it's not disrespectful to veterans when Walmart doesn't say the Pledge of Allegiance at opening, or when the many other boards in town, some do say the pledge, many don't, boards, committees, et cetera. I'm not big on, I'm not big on government compelling speech, or, because you can say it's not compelling and that's fine, creating a scenario where it's pseudo-compelling speech. And what I mean by that is things like the pledge exist, and again, I'm not anti-pledge. I say it, I like it. When I was a Boy Scout leader, you better believe the kids in my, in my den at Colors stood at attention and took it seriously. But look, I like the pledge, that isn't universal. There's people for whom it makes them uncomfortable. We've had many meetings here where the majority of the people in the room don't stand or engage with the pledge, and at least some of them, that's a very conscientious decision. And I'm of the opinion that government needs to be accessible. That it's, that our role is to create an environment where everyone in town, every citizen in town feels comfortable coming and expressing their feelings. If, I mean, that's the point of this public meetings. If we are starting by everyone saying a pledge, that not everyone does, and I get it, I get why pledging allegiance feels uncomfortable, to some people it's just something to say, but it's an oath. If they're not saying it, that others them automatically. You're in a situation where people are coming in and if they're not going to stand and say it, we're effectively calling them out. I don't want to do that to the residents of this town. I think it's important, more important, that we get voices heard than we just stand and say the pledge. It's not disrespectful. It's not inappropriate. I don't think it really belongs in, again, because it's kind of compelling speech, I don't think it's the government's business to push it. I love the pledge, I love it at scouting events, I love, I'm very comfortable with it when they have it at sporting events or other private things. I think it's important the government not be in the business of telling people what they're supposed to be saying or indicating what they're supposed to be saying. And we're not the federal government, we're the Lunenburg Playing Board, that's real limited. But we're still government.
But you're not necessarily compelling or telling anybody they have to do anything, obviously, because people don't have to do it. It's, it's something that we've always done, it's something that almost every other group in town does. I don't understand the resistance to it. It's, it's, we wouldn't be able to have these meetings were it not for the republic that we live in.
This town is older than the United States.
Definitely is.
Mm-hmm. Our community is what's important. Our community is what holds itself together. We're not held together by the federal government. Nobody is held together by the federal government. It is just its own power collection. And to give honor to the overarching system when it's not important, it doesn't mean anything to us, what happens on that level literally happens for the people who have power and nothing else. And to say that it is important to bring that here into our community feels wrong. And it's, especially from a position of not wanting to be told what to do by the state to then step up to the federal level and be like, no, but you guys we're super on board with, feels very strange to me.
So it's okay to tell us that we can't pledge in a public meeting?
You can't, do it before the meeting.
Okay.
That's fine. I think we, I don't know.
Yeah, to me, I just, I can't believe it. It's, it really is shocking to me, you know? And with the whole, all the issues going on, like in moving to Lunenburg and watching the various meetings, I was really impressed, it didn't seem like the boards would get distracted by, you know, needless issues. And this, this is really profound that this issues, you know, it never crossed my mind that a town board or a meeting would not do the Pledge of Allegiance. I mean, I'm struggling to try to even wrap my, my head around it. And, you know, I do get the compelled speech, and I am also someone who in the last, say, four and a half years or so have, you know, opened my eyes and watched government a little closer and have not been impressed by what I've seen. And that is specific to the state and federal government. I've actually been very impressed by the boards, to include this board, in Lunenburg. So it's, it's disheartening that this is even an issue and is taking, it just, I can't wrap my head around it. It goes to the fabric of our society and it really gives us the basis to not do the Pledge of Allegiance if you don't want to or leave the room. Well, and I honestly would, would have no issue with that whatsoever. But I don't know if the town has a policy. I suspect they don't because it would have never have crossed my mind that they would need to have a policy for such a thing. But I do believe that every town board, you know, a representative of the local government should be opening the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who are willing to do it. If somebody does not want to do it, that I support that wholeheartedly, and that goes to the fundamental, you know, pledge. And it just, to, to, to attack that, to omit that is, it's, it's a, it's a bigger issue than just doing a pledge, not a pledge. It's just, it's a, it's a creep in the wrong direction.
I find it interesting because I think we're about 80% in agreement that lends us in very different places.
Right. And that's, and that's the part I get. Like I, those, you know, I suspect those who, you know, don't support doing the pledge, that we probably do align a lot on our concerns of, you know, again, you know, I would, I think anyway that I represent. a lot of people who, you know, throughout my career, who had a job in, in municipal government, that I just trusted government to do the right thing, I wasn't paying attention, or, you know, it's just, of course, this is what government wants to do, it's the right thing, but, not to get in into it, but, you know, the, the, the mandates of the vaccines and closing down business, you know, it, it was, you know, opened my eyes a bit, and I don't love what I see, but I, I do pledge allegiance because we can fix this. If, if people get involved and address the issues with government, we can, we can make a difference, and it's, it's fundamental to the pledge.
Ultimately, my concern is wanting as many voices in the room as possible. And I will use tonight as an example, but let's also be honest, I mean, yes, we, we effectively had two interest groups here, and, and I know the, the water district would be very strong to say they're not an interest group, they represent the town for water, and, and I get that, they do, but they represent the town in a very specific capacity. It's important to me that we create the most welcoming environment possible. If we're gonna be real, that is why I crack dumb jokes, that is why I have the attitude I do when presenting, I'm capable of much more formal. I don't do it because I want the public at ease. We know that there are members of the public that aren't at ease with the pledge. We know, that, no, we're not forcing them to say it, but we also, I think from other avenues in our life, know what it feels like to be the only person not doing something that everyone else is doing, or that the majority is doing. And I don't want that feeling of non-belonging in the halls of government, because I want everyone, I want, I want the immigrant who defected from North Korea and got here, who is terrified at the notion of the idea of having to pledge things, I'm not saying we're North Korea, I'm not making that, cause somewhere else is gonna be like, he compared us to them, no, no. But there are people for whom that kind of pledging really means something negative. I want them here too, cause when they come to open a business, when they wanna build a home, I want them to feel as comfortable coming before us as those of us who've been saying the pledge our whole lives very happily.
But that person is here.
Well, they are if they come.
I mean, here, here in the United States, and the flag is here.
But the Pledge of Allegiance is not a requirement of citizenship. It, I, learning it might be, I don't know the current requirements.
They're not, they're not gonna be turned away.
The oath of allegiance is, to become a citizen, you need to recite the oath of allegiance, which is much more about, are you willing to go to war and kill people for this?
Fair.
So I had to do that, I'm not a fan of that either.
So.
Is there room for a public comment on this? There's a raised hand.
Oh, yeah, no, I, because I know there's members of the public who have expressed interest in this over time, that's why I put it on the agenda, because people have spoken that public comment.
I think there was a yes, right?
I think they're unmuted, yeah, Aaron, I see a green light from them, but I don't hear any sound coming through the room.
Hi, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes.
So my question would be for the people that are really looking to have the pledge said before the meetings, why is it so important to you? What is, what is not saying it impeding you from doing in these meetings? Is it stopping you from acting in accordance to how the government wants you to act, or how your community wants you to act? What is, what is not saying it stopping you from doing it? Are you afraid you won't act with honor if you don't say it? What, I'm struggling to understand why it's so important.
We have a question from a member of the public, and people are welcome to, I mean, I think it was directed at those who are strongly in favor of the pledge, and welcome to respond or not, that's your call.
Well, without reiterating what I did say, you know, traditions are important.
No, they're not.
So, well, I'm, I'm gonna pause this for a second, because I'm not looking for a straight-up debate. I think we're, it's good to ask questions, I, I think we can have a discussion, but I'm not looking for a straight-up debate. The question was, what does the board member feel? They've answered.
And what about how it relates to the First Amendment and religion in the government? Because we, you know, under Eisenhower, decided to include the phrase "under God" within the Pledge of Allegiance, which honestly has no place whatsoever with any government proceedings at all.
So the founding documents matter to you in some regard, but not in other regards?
So I'm actually.
The founding documents say nothing about the pledge, you should probably not.
I'm gonna pause this here, because I'm not getting a feeling of, from multiple sides of, I'm getting contention, not discussion. I think discussion's powerful and important, I think contention isn't gonna help.
It was a stupid question, and in earnest, and I would love to know what not saying the pledge is stopping them from doing, or maybe if they really need to, perhaps they could say it in the morning when they get up, and that could do them good for the day.
Okay, so thank you for the public input. Ultimately, I, I also think it's important we notice, regardless, that I'm, I'm a big believer that actions matter far more than words. I, I have myself zero patience for performative patriotism. What I like is what the board's doing now, what the members of the public were doing tonight, they care about their community, they show up, we care about our community, we show up. To me, that's patriotism. What I do, before we vote, I wanna set a couple expectations. I do not personally believe that it's appropriate for government to be pushing people to do the pledge during, during meetings and things like that, where we need to be getting, for all the reasons I've said.
I agree, we're not pushing anybody.
So, to that end, I do wanna be clear, if the board votes in favor, they do want the pledge during meetings, we will say the pledge during, I as chair will make it open to say the pledge during meetings. I'm not leading the pledge during meetings, because ethically, I, I don't believe it's right, for the same, uh, in the same way I think some of you believe ethically it's very important, but that's okay. If the board wants it, we can make room after the opening of the meeting to say the pledge, as opposed to before the opening of the meeting, that, but it's gonna be someone else leading it, because I'm not interested in that, and I'm not interested in having my speech compelled. But either way, I don't have a problem with us saying it before the meeting starts, like we have been doing recently, that doesn't bother me. I wish it was a little more separated, but I get, timing-wise, how that becomes hard for other reasons. So, but if we vote in favor, I will make room for it, after the, after we call the order, probably will call the order, say the pledge, and then do the spiel, whatever we have to do legally there. I'm not gonna be the one running it, but someone else can, that's fine. I just wanna set that expectation, I don't wanna, I will make clear what we're voting about. This isn't something we need a motion for one way or another, so I'm just gonna call for those in favor of voting for wanting to say the pledge at meetings, those against, and then we will take whatever the result is, and that's what we'll do. Are there any objections to this?
No.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's, like, again, this is not even policy, it's just what we do, right? So, cool. Though, all in favor of saying the pledge within the established meeting?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Aye. Well, there we go, it will be said, again, I will, because it's not actually meaningful discussion, like, it doesn't impact anything, I can talk to y'all later and see if there's someone who wants to lead it during that timeframe, fine. All right, pledge of allegiance, check. Going back, minutes approval, let's try to rock this stuff. We have minutes for May 13th and for June 10th.
The June 10th ones, just FYI, were my first time drafting minutes and getting this submitted to this, so like, if there's an issue and it needs to go back and it gets denied, I will not be offended.
Y'all heard Logan, he's gonna go home and cry and curse us forever.
We'll be gentle, don't worry.
Richard, would you mind taking, I don't know if you are, looking at the meetings just to inform us, to make sure these meet whatever requirements minutes are supposed to have?
I had not received them, but I'll take a look at them.
What was that?
I had not received the minutes, so I had not looked at them.
Do you want me to forward them to you now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
So does he not have access to the planning board one drive?
Uh, I think it's just that it was previously set up, there's a separate one for planning the department within the town, and planning board, the materials that you have access to, I personally think the distinction's kind of redundant and creates issues like this, so I might change that as I'm able.
Speak up and challenge it.
Yeah.
I mean, dude, it's your job.
I, I don't even think there's anyone that I'm speaking up to, I'm just kind of clarifying, like, what I can change and what is, you know, subject to a legal requirement, that's.
Oh, yeah, good, okay.
But yeah, so.
And again, Richard, my big question is, I just wanna make sure that we're approving minutes that are actually appropriate from that legal sense.
All right, uh, should be sent, coming your way. The, yeah, I prepared the one for 6:10, and the one from 5:13, I believe was one of the items that got punted from the Zoom, the, the planning board meeting with Zoom difficulties.
Technically, I was at the June 12th one, it's just nobody could hear me.
I think if you couldn't participate, then that counts as not.
Yeah, yeah.
Once you're done perusing, if you can throw me a thumbs up, just so I know you're done reading, cool?
Yeah, I haven't read the minutes since we've been on video much anyways.
I'll note that on the, uh, May 13th minutes, item 10.
May 13th.
The punted ones, I think.
Item 10, signed decision, it shows a motion made and seconded, but no vote. Doesn't give a vote.
Can ask Annie about that.
Okay.
So I wouldn't act on those minutes tonight. And the main reason I haven't looked at the minutes is, my time's limited, so I've been basically focused on what?
No, I get it.
Higher priority?
Yeah, I just wanted a set of eyes that could tell us if there's a major legal, like, oh, minutes have to have X.
Yeah. The main thing is, you have to have motion second, there has to be a vote, or record of the vote. Looking at the June 12th minutes, under public hearings for 255 Sunny Hill Road, it should be noted that this was a continuation of a public hearing that was continued from whatever date to this date, cause it doesn't show opening of it, so it needs to give that background.
All right. I, I've heard two concerns with the meeting, with the minutes as posted, I think they would have to be sent to us, edited and sent to us again for reapproval. Do we have to do anything to not approve minutes, or do we just go on?
Just go on.
Okay, cool, great.
What I would do is, I would look at these further, and if I have any comments, I'll send them to Logan.
Sounds great, thank you.
And that also may be something you can get from, being aware of time with Richard is limited, that might also be something you can get just from, uh, there's not as many experienced people in town as you'd like these days, okay.
I mean, now that I know that, I already had motions seconds and the record of the vote as like the big, you know, bolded items, and they were present in the, the minutes that I made, I just didn't catch the continuation bit, so I think, yeah, I'll be able to check in on that.
All right, great, we're gonna go on. Committee reports, gonna try to be quick, let's get out of here, master plan steering committee.
No meeting.
Bam. Open space committee.
I think, I haven't been to one of those yet.
Okay.
Tomorrow night.
Municipal building design committee.
Uh, we've had no meeting.
AGCOM.
Uh, I'm no longer a member, so if we wanna continue having liaison, that's not gonna be me.
Okay, uh, we can look at that at a future meeting. Capital planning committee, we are meeting on Wednesday for capital planning, as opposed to capital prioritizing. Economic development committee.
I could go through my notes, or just defer to them coming to the next meeting.
Fine with that. Stormwater task force.
Uh, no meeting.
Okay. MR, Montezuget Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, no meeting, and we have no meeting this month.
Montezuget Joint Transportation Committee.
No meeting.
Okay, rock and roll summertime. Ongoing items, master plan, I mean, the progress is going, they're working on the, on the, I think it's third, whatever the current survey is, um, to then get out, because it was found to be a little bold and wordy. Uh, I did follow up with them, they are going to recommend a couple of communities, they, the, they don't have a draft ready for the implementation portion, but they're going to follow up with me with a couple of communities that have done, like, how they've done implementation that might be ones we want to look at for the implementation phase, like, to get some ideas, but there will be implementation recommendations during the, when, once the actual master plan is complete as well.
And I think you're coming to the next master plan steering committee with that information, aren't you?
I think.
I think you're on the agenda.
I believe, what, when is that next meeting?
24th, Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, July 24th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yep. And, whilst my, water supply protection district, guess what, MBTA, guess what? Lunenburg Municipal Buildings, heard nothing. All right, meeting schedule, uh, the planning board meets at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, unless otherwise noted. Upcoming meetings include July 22nd and August 12th. You've heard us at this meeting discuss other upcoming dates as well, follow the cadence. There we go, public comment.
Uh, I have a raised hand from Dave McDonald.
Okay, Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, my name is Dave McDonald, 155 Island Road. Uh, first of all, I just wanna thank the board for bringing up the pledge, I wanna thank the board members who voted for it, I think it's the right thing to do. My, my concern, Mr. Chair, is some of your comments, and one of them is, it's almost like you're trying to get ratings to come to your meetings, uh, and if you were afraid to put the pledge on, people aren't gonna come, it, it doesn't work that way. People wanna go to the planning board to get their business done, your government department in this town, and that's your duty to do, that's why you got elected. So I just wanna make that comment, and I wanna thank you all for your consideration on this, thank you guys. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It was good to see you the other day at the Ritter Building.
Yep, same here, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other public comment? Seeing none. Board comment, or concerns? My concern is it's time to go home. Adjournment.
I move adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience out in TV land, have a great night.